Yes, this is the meeting, the regular city council meeting of July 17, 2024. This portion of the meeting is the special meeting and then we will have our adjourned regular meeting beginning at 6 o'clock PM. All members of the city council are present and we don't have any speakers for closed session, so if we'd like a motion to recess to closed session.
Second?
All right.
Motion. Carrie's five oh. Thank you.
This is the meeting of July 17, 2024. This is the adjourned regular business meeting. The mayor has called the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is the invocation given by Assistant Pastor Matt Levcek with Calvary Chapel St. Clementine.
Thank you. So you can come up here to the podium and yeah, thank you very much for being here.
Well, thank you so much for having me. It's a great honor. So thank you. I just want to take a minute and read from Proverbs 16, just the first three verses. It says, "The plans of the heart belong to man, but the answer of the tongue is from the Lord. All the ways of a man are pure in his own eyes, but the Lord weighs the spirit. Commit your work to the Lord, and your plans will be established." And let's pray. And Father, we want to thank you. I thank you for your word to us. I thank you for the wisdom that you give through your word. And Lord, I love that verse, "Commit your work to the Lord, and your plans will be established." So, Lord, we commit this evening to you. And Lord, I pray for that you give wisdom to each one here. And Lord, bless this city. Bless it mightly as you always have. Bless each person here. We thank you for their service. We thank you for all they do for the city. And Lord, we ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Pledge of allegiance.
I'll do it.
Pardon?
I'll do it.
Come on up here.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Should I stand?
It's right there. It's fine.
Okay, ready? Put your hand on your heart. Thank you. Ready, go. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that.
And we will note that all council members are present. There are no special presentations. Next item on the agenda is council member reports.
Oh, okay. I guess I'll start since I have that tradition now, I guess. But let me find my list that I put together. Just a couple of things that happened since the last meeting. I had the opportunity to talk to the RSVP, the volunteers that go out in the community and give tickets and help with traffic. And it's a group that does a lot for this city as volunteers. And I had the ability to give them the praise and thanks they deserve for volunteering their time and effort here in this city. Had a meeting with the Lifeguard Foundation about their significant project happening in our park, and the proposal and how they're going about raising money for that lifeguard statute. So that was a great thing that will be coming before sometime in the next, probably the next meeting. I think all of us had the opportunity to meet with Civisocial Communications Group that's going to help the city and each of us communicate better. It's, I know it's been an issue for the city, and we're trying to improve that, get our messages and our ideas and our projects out there in a timely basis. And I know everybody here, I think, had the opportunity to meet with their leadership and go over how we make those changes. I think Rick and I went to Island Light at the Beach Club, which is one of the many activities that we put on here in the city. It's an extraordinary event. You know, people, families with their children enjoying night out on the town at the pool. It's the kind of activities that make this city what it is today. At the Beach Club, each of these families, and I would say there are maybe 150, 200 families there, enjoying the night at our Beach Club. there, enjoying the night at our beach club. So it's an extraordinary event, and we have others coming up, so take a look at the calendar. There was also a celebration at Rainbow Sandals that I think most of us were able to attend and participate in. So I'm covering some of your stuff maybe, but it was a great event honoring Sparky, their owner, and a community icon. And so we've, we always, as best we can, like to thank him for what he does for this community because he's a real contributor to this community. We had an Orange Day, Orange County Flag Day celebration on Flag Day, which many of us participated in, in one form or another. I had the opportunity to speak before the St. Clemente Arts Association meeting. They have a week where they allow people to come into the town, they paint, they auction off, or they sell some of their projects, but they also recognize and give awards to the people that do extraordinary paintings of this city. If you ever get a chance to attend their week-long event and their dinner, the St. Clemente Arts Association is an extraordinary association, and the artwork is fabulous. Met with the Peer Pride Outreach Community Presentation. I know some of my colleagues were also there, where we got an update on what they're trying or what they're proposing for the city, working in partnership with us to try and prove that area near the walkway in the Pier Bowl. They have some fabulous ideas that were going to eventually come to us. They're looking, they're also looking for, to raise funds for those projects. It will also come up in the near future. One of the most significant things that came out since our last meeting was the Grants Pass case. As you recall, the city decided to file in Grants Pass, a case before the Supreme Court. We filed the amicus brief arguing that the burden that's imposed on cities and local governments to house people that were service resistant really did not violate the Eighth Amendment to the Constitution. The Supreme Court actually agreed with a lot of the points that we raised in that case, if not most of them, essentially reversing the Martin versus Boise case and giving the city more discretion and more opportunities to deal with on a effective way with the service resistant people in this community that don't want to get the help that we're trying to offer them. You know, in that, we pointed out, and I've said it repeatedly, that almost all 31 of the people that are in this city right now that we call homeless are really service resistant. That is, we have found housing somewhere in this county. And the court also agreed that it doesn't have to be in your city, you don't have to have housing here in your city. So we, this case will give us more leeway to address and deal with the people and really come up with an effective solution for those people, and I look forward to working on that. We had the Fourth of July celebration. The beach, I'll show you pictures a little bit later, looked fabulous. We started out with the slip and slide to deal with the chair race. I don't know if some people want to talk about that. I know most of the people had a chance to view it. I don't know if any members went down on the slip and slide, but
Talk about that.
They could talk about that. I think it was, it was a great transition from the chair race. It was safe. It was a community celebration. I think the city did an extraordinary job in trying to transition away from some of the troubling issues that happened, that this chair race was evolving into. But we'll see, we'll work with the community in however we can. We also had the Fourth of July fireworks, which went off without a hitch. Last week, we had the St. Clemente Beach Concert, which we were able to kick off our summer concert series. We have many more. If you don't know about them, look online. We have many more concerts coming up every week. They're great. They're, what's it, Yachty?
Yachty by Nature.
By Nature was the last band. There's bands every week. Extraordinary amount of people there. I would say even maybe 300 people, because now we have a big beach, and so more people could come. So if you get a chance, go to one of those events. This is what, again, sort of the activities that make this city a city. Last week, I was able to attend a conference at UCI with many and many experts from the University of California, where we were able to discuss how we address beach sound retention and protect our beaches. We had people from a number of organizations, including Assemblywoman Diane Dixon, Assemblywoman Davies, Orange County Supervisor Katrina Foley, the University of California Irvine, the California Chamber of Commerce, the Army Corps of Engineers, Orange County Public Works, Orange County Transportation Authority, Orange County Water Authority. We came up with approaches and solutions that we need to talk about collaboratively with the other cities in our county to keep focusing in on all our beaches. So I think it was a great start, and we will continue to do that. We've agreed to meet on a regular basis to talk about our own city's issues and how we resolve those. So those are my reports. I know I covered a lot of your stuff too, but feel free now to. And thank you.
Thank you, Victor. And every time you do this, it reminds me of how many things we go to, and I get tired all over again. Thank you for that. But on, real quick, on the beach concert last Thursday, that was also, it's put on, that concert was sponsored and paid for by the Friends of San Clemente Beaches and Parks Foundation. You might have heard of it.
Who's the president?
Who's the, well, I don't, I don't want to say, but I will say it's a great nonprofit, the nonprofit of the year this year. So sponsored Yachty's by Nature. It was fantastic to see the beach as wide as it was and so many people. It was like wood stock in the sand. It was really, really great. Next, tomorrow, I guess, Beaches, the concert is actually at Linda Lane because they're setting up for the Ocean Fest. So if you can go on up to Linda Lane, that's a great venue also. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you gentlemen have covered most of it. I think the Ocean Festival Dinner, Kickoff Dinner, was last week, and I attended that. And as Rick mentioned, starts this weekend, the greatest show on surf, so I hope we'll all be there. Also, Mark and I attended the ocean, the Advisory Committee Liaison Group, and that's all I have to add.
All right, thank you.
I think you covered a lot of things. Just a quick shout out with the Rainbow Sandals, 50 years. I mean, that's incredible, amazing business. All started here in San Clemente, and shout out to Sparky. It was also his birthday as well.
Eightieth.
Eightieth birthday. It was a great celebration for him. Attended the Roost Studios Ribbon Cutting. Congratulations to them on their new move to a larger facility. The Chamber of Commerce Government and Cities Affairs Meeting, where we had Don Barnes there talking about sheriffs in OC. Also, this was a really great one, the Orange County Sheriff's Technology Center Ribbon Cutting. They created a $121 million facility with state-of-the-art technology. And as, he mentioned San Clemente there at the ribbon cutting, because the very night before that ribbon cutting, they found a, or I should say, they tracked a carjacking that happened in San Clemente, and were able to track the car all the way to Dana Point, pull up the OC sheriffs, and arrest them within about 45 minutes of the incident. Got to meet the person who did the tracking at the OC Center of Technology. So it was really incredible things there, and all the tools that they have, all the new, I saw, they have a OC sheriff's Cybertruck now that they're developing, which, really incredible stuff that they're doing. The Stars, Stripes, and Slip and Slide, incredible. The only complaint I heard was that the line was a little bit too long, so I think the solution to that is to have two slip and slides. But I hope our city manager can get down there next time, next year, and show us how it's done.
It wasn't steep enough.
Incredibly fun. My kids had a blast on it. I had a blast on it. It was all around a great experience. Fourth of July fireworks, incredible. I actually had a city council member from San Juan tell us that our fireworks were the best in the area. So, well done on that, something we can really be proud of. And then, yes, we were at the South Orange County Economic Coalition Board installation. And last Thursday night, got to go to the 16th Annual Orange County Fire Authority Best and Bravest Awards, where we got to celebrate our OCFA members and all that they are doing to protect us and keep us safe. Incredible feats in this last year, where, how they performed when the meter fire at the Tustin Air, not the air show, but the Tustin Air
Field.
Field, yes, that burned down, and the work that they were doing there, and then also where they were at the mass shooting up at Cook's Corner. So it was great to celebrate all the work that our first responders are doing there. Yes, that is all.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Yeah, I mean, all credit to city staff on the Stars, Stripes, and Slip and Slide. It's incredibly difficult to set up a brand-new event with no blueprint, and the staff just nailed it, so great job. Andy, and please pass that on to Samantha and the whole crew. There was a suggestion there. People love the tie-dye shirts with the city symbol on them, and they were like, if you had a booth selling them, we would have sold out. So I don't know if there's something there, but that's kind of a cool thing, like, you know, kind of a surf San Clemente tie-dye shirt. But that was great. Best and bravest was amazing. I'm the, you know, I'm our rep on the Orange County Fire Authority, so always wonderful to celebrate our heroes. Also want to point out, I think we have some pickleballers here, right? We got some pickleball fans. We had the PPA, we hosted again at Lifetime. It was, again, a wonderful competition and great showing for San Clemente as the host of the favorite tournament on the tour. All the pros love coming to San Clemente, so it was wonderful to support that. And keeping up with the sports theme, if you hadn't heard, we had another surfer win a competition. Bella Kenworthy won for the Challenger Series on the World Surf League, right? And that is just incredibly rad. I mean, we, we really are, as Gloria Andino says, the center of the surfing universe. We dominate on the men's and women's tour. We saw Sawyer Lindblad just kicking butt on the championship tour. So this, again, will be our last year hosting the finals before it moves to Fiji. So looking forward to making it the best WSL finals, too, and showing off the best of San Clemente, too, very soon for that. But yeah, Bella won a competition down in South Africa, so great credit to her, and they'll be competing on that at the World Series of Surfing up in Huntington Beach soon, so you can watch her in person within the next couple of weeks. Can't remember the exact date on that, but yeah, so, you know, great job, San Clemente. We are showing how awesome we are, again, across all kinds of different areas, so that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. At the end of the agenda, we normally have council comments. I didn't mention it earlier, but I'd like to consider agendizing an item. This may be the appropriate time to mention it, but
Yeah.
We've had some issues in, by state or brothers, we've had some unlicensed food vendors that have come down, I guess, from Los Angeles or up from San Diego, I'm not sure where. But these are unlicensed people, no health inspection, they're serving food that is potentially dangerous. Our code enforcement people have been on the scene and have been prompted in getting out there, but it continues to be a problem. And I guess when the inspectors come and say, you're not licensed, you're not allowed to be here, they either thumb their nose, or they leave and come back the next day. And I guess there's, my concern is that there's no real sanctions for them when that happens. And I think we probably ought to have a, we ought to consider, perhaps, an ordinance which would require our Park Rangers or perhaps the San Diego, or excuse me, our sheriff's deputies to impound those rigs, those carts, so that they can't continue to sell unchecked food to the public. So I think, I'd like to agendize that, if that we could.
We'll agendize it, yes, city attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no. It would be appropriate to do it at items for future agendas. I thought you were just making a comment.
Okay. Future agenda items, we'll give you a chance to talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
There's probably a couple other things that need to be agendized. All right, let's
Oral communications?
Yep.
I'll call the first several speakers. If you can, can just take a seat up here at the front, and we will get started. Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Ira Horowitz, followed by Suzanne Ruiz, followed by Lois McNichol. Amanda?
I just have a quick, a couple slides here. Is that?
You have 14 seconds.
It goes 2:52, and then it's 16, and I was counting down. Okay. Hello, council members, thank you. And I am glad that, thank you, Mayor Cabral, for bringing up Grants Pass, the City of Grants Pass versus Johnson's ruling, or the ruling on that from the Supreme Court. And I hope that Ordinance 8.86.040 regarding enforcement will be amended, because in Section A, it mentions Martin versus Boise, so that is outdated. Hopefully, that will be updated. So, next slide, please. So I'm really concerned regarding a question that was in a survey, and I know that's going to be addressed on a different matter, but what I'm addressing is that the appearance of the question, the question is, I'm going to read a list of organizations, individuals in San Clemente, I would like you to tell me if you have a generally favorable or generally unfavorable opinion of each one. Well, it's, next slide, please. So, so the members of the public, about 433 approximately, were asked what they thought, if, whether they were favorable or unfavorable about the city council members. So in election, general election time, I think it's not appropriate, I think it's unethical to ask this question, because we have one candidate that's running for State Assembly and one running for city council. Next slide. The next question is, would you say that things are, say things in San Clemente, they didn't put that in there, are generally headed in the right direction, or do you feel that things are off on the wrong track? Next slide, please. So that was the question, and that's the percentage. So again, this is how we're doing as a whole, and it could go back to the city council members as a whole. So I hope that, as a suggestion, in the future, that hopefully questions that can lean toward a political side or a political candidate, I hope that will be avoided in the future. And I understand that AFM3 does have experience with candidate campaigns and ballot measure campaigns, and so that is a concern, because from what their webpage says, is however often this work still touches on issues of public policy, either directly or indirectly. So whether it's, what they say is, though all of our researchers are experienced with ballot measure and candidate campaigns, we also work on a wide assortment of non-campaign topics. However often this work still touches on issues of public policy, either directly or indirectly. So I think sometimes that is a concern, that may be a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Any next speaker?
Ira Horowitz, followed by Suzanne Ruiz.
Good evening. My name is Ira Horowitz. I'm a resident of St. Clemente, have been for over 10 years. What I have here in front of me is a petition that I've sent to the Orange County Fire Authority in regarding a huge lot of, plot of land that's owned by the city, and they have ignored cleaning it up. And it's a tremendous fire hazard, and I've contacted Mr. Hall. This is directed, I've sent you three unanswered emails in regarding to this problem. Now, all my neighbors have sent letters to the authority. I've had the Laura Smith, who I guess was the assistant fire chief, and another fire chief at my property taking pictures of this land, and it's located right behind the Acapulco Street, 607 Acapulco, and adjacent to the area of Presidential Heights. I, a couple, three or four acres, they've cleaned it once or twice I, a couple, three or four acres, they've cleaned it once or twice since I've been there, and they've ignored cleaning it now. Do we want to have another Lahaina in San Clemente? I don't think so. There are many homes there, there are wild animals, there are properties, people, and it needs to be addressed. I beg you, please, you're my last hope, I've gone as far as I can go. Somebody needs to send a crew, which I know there is money authorized to do this, send a crew, clean that area up, and save these homes. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, we will take a look at that.
Sir...
Hold on, hold on. The city manager will reach out to you and...
Yes. I apologize, I've been out pretty long. You have my emails, do you have them?
I will know tomorrow, I apologize, I just got back in the country.
And sir, thank you for your vigilance on this issue on behalf of, of course, your neighborhood in the city, and please do forward them to me, I have a direct communication to the Fire Department.
I want you to know, I'm not going away, I'm going to keep this up until we get it cleaned up.
Your time is up, though, so thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Suzanne Ruiz.
Hi, I'm here again, as I was on the 18th of June, to talk about the illegal taco carts, and they are Hispanic, most likely, it looks like little Tijuana, so if you've been anywhere through Mexico, you know exactly what I mean, but most importantly, we already talked about it once, and that was on the 18th. The most important thing is that this gentleman right here is the same one that was there for four freaking days in a row, bold and brazen, I just want to tell you, these are people that don't take no for an answer. But, once we got just one of our code enforcement who works from 2:00 to 1:00 in the morning, and Mr. Gomez, he is great, he's a little guy, but he's mighty, and he was able to get these people out of there. Most importantly, they're not willing to go, so they take their, you know, their time. But, this has been going on even before then, this is in front of Sprouts Market, and that was early June, remember the dates I'm giving you, the 17th to the 20th, it was this guy. So, I'm just saying, the only thing I didn't get any answer to with Tom and Danielle, Daniela in charge of code enforcement, her name is Danielle Sorham, was in fact, what I brought up at the last meeting that I spoke at, is why are all these calls being routed, truly routed, to other states? I got Washington State on a Monday, I called back because I wasn't happy with the fact she couldn't find the only Stater Brothers Market on, in our whole city, she couldn't find it. I said, "Where am I calling from?" She says, "I don't have to give you that information." Well, you know, that's a red flag. So I called back, and I got this nice young man named Seth, and he says, "We're in Washington State, ma'am." I was furious that we are giving our tax dollars, people, to other states to employ other people in other states. The next day, it was the same thing, it was Texas, then it was finally San Diego, then it was Washington State again. This has got to stop, and who is allowing this? Is this a corporate enterprise? I mean, where they go state to state and put up these taco carts from various states, and somebody oversight, sees everything? It's very nefarious, and it doesn't look good for our city. Most importantly, due to the diligence of citizens, okay, that's why they got, they were gone. Most importantly, I do say, no help was given at all, except for Jose Gomez, he was wonderful. But, and Danielle did go with Mr. Gomez, with the ranger, who, that's why the guy left, and then he came back again on the 27th, seven days later.
Your time is up, but we are gonna, you've heard earlier, we're gonna agenda, I talked about that.
I'm just saying, we need to agendize this item, because there's going to be a loss...
Who's our next speaker?
Lois McNichol, followed by Tom Streeter, followed by Lisa Edony, followed by Maura Mikulak. Lois McNichol.
Okay, I'm not here tonight to drop names or congratulate anyone for doing their jobs. Politicians engage in this behavior. They love their titles and expect to be addressed in that manner, and you will see them everywhere in the next few months, because it's an election year. We had a few city council, few council members recently attended a North Beach community meeting, but I can say, since I was there, that only one of them remained for the entire meeting, the other two left shortly after they were introduced. There are common beliefs in this world of politics, that, oh, it's politics as usual, and whoever has the most money wins, but these only hold true because people believe that politics is a profession instead of an elected office, and running for office has become complicated and digitized. There are very few forums where the public can make a decision after hearing a discussion by the candidates of their platforms, and candidates who wish to serve the public don't receive attention or funding. Politicians serve themselves instead of the citizens. Congressmen, governors, state legislators, county supervisors, and council members are all public servants. We pay their salaries, and they must answer to the public. Anyone running for council members should provide a plan that will address the concerns of San Clemente residents. For instance, homelessness. People could be directed to apply online for general relief, they would receive immediate CalFresh, Medi-Cal, and they would receive assistance to apply for SSI, which would allow them to be eligible to a state-funded housing program. SB 329 is a bill, and I'm not sure how many people are aware of it, because that wasn't until today, that would allow city councils to increase the cap on their salaries as of July 2023. In San Clemente, that would be $1,600 a month, and that amount could be increased by 10% annually. Sand restoration is a huge topic, and this council would hold the city hostage by providing sand at any price and quality, which would include a 1% sales tax increase. North Beach sand is coming from a riverbank.
Good job.
Next speaker.
Tom Streeter, followed by Lisa Edony, followed by Maura Mikulak.
In the recent case of Grants Pass versus Johnson, the Supreme Court has given us a green light on homelessness. We now have the power to forbid homeless camping throughout the city, the Constitution has declared it to be no impediment. We could take that green light which the Supreme Court has given us, but we shouldn't, it's not in our best interest. If we drive homeless people out of our city, where will they go? Push them north into Dana Point? The Dana Pointers will push them right back, and those folks have clout, those folks have yachts. Push homeless people east into the brush? They will maintain campfires. The OC Fire Authority will be quite concerned and quite justly. Push them south into Camp Pendleton? That will put a big crimp in the USMC readiness and training. Mass arrests? The OC jail is a very expensive homeless shelter. Jailing should be reserved for the very few homeless people who refuse to comply with reasonable regulations. What should those reasonable regulations be? One, don't camp in a residential zone, folks are sleeping, or in a commercial zone, folks would like to enjoy a nice meal at the restaurant. That leaves the light industrial zone around City Hall. Yes, City Hall does house a substantial OC Sheriff's Department substation. Camp only on unused sidewalks, provide your own nighttime tent. Don't camp between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, that's when city workers and light industrial workers are actually using those sidewalks. Don't leave your nighttime tent behind you on the sidewalk during the next day. Yes, we will shuttle you and your tent from the OCTA bus line to City Hall every evening at 8:00. Yes, we will shuttle you and your tent back to the bus line at 6:00 the next morning. Yes, we will provide a trailer-mounted porta potty outside City Hall every night between 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Even with the best of homeless shelter programs, we know that there will be some unsheltered people who will slip through the cracks and will be on our streets every night. They will be sleeping somewhere at 3:00 AM. Where do we want them to be sleeping? They will need to urinate or defecate somewhere at 4:00 AM. Where do we want them to urinate or defecate? There are practical political considerations, too. Grants Pass is an organ. While the Supreme Court litigation was proceeding, the Oregon Legislature passed a law that city ordinances on camping had to be, quote, "objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner with regards to persons experiencing homelessness," unquote. California politics being what they are, Sacramento is likely to follow suit. Even though the Supreme Court didn't avoid our current ordinance, our own legislature probably will. Let's get ahead of the curve, let's amend our ordinance to add that time, place, and manner. Let's amend it now.
Thank you. Lisa?
So I'm wearing green, in the spirit of cooperation, and I hope you're going to give me a go on this idea, so I'm subliminally trying to affect you all, so I just gave away my secret. So I'm here tonight to talk about e-bike safety and enforcement of our current codes in our city and state law. There are some things that are really common sense, but it's currently not happening. There needs to be a seat for every rider on an e-bike. Kids under the age of 18 must wear a helmet. Dangerous activities are prohibited, wheelies, stunts, you know, the yoga moves that I see the kids doing, that's illegal, right? Surons are not street legal. I have an idea. I've seen some crazy things just recently, in the last two weeks. I saw a kid run a red light, solid red light, on the corner of La Pata and Hermosa, and there was an Orange County Sheriff's Deputy right next to me in a car. The kid was alone, he wasn't in one of those, you know, gangs of kids, he ran the red light, and the police officer didn't pursue him and pull him over. Now, I'm thinking, if I'm on an e-bike, wearing my helmet, and I run a red light next to an officer, I don't know, you think I'd get pulled over and be ticketed? So I have an idea. We have some phenomenal motor officers with the Orange County Sheriffs. Maybe half of San Clemente's been pulled over at one time or another by Officer Bruno, he's phenomenal. I have a proposition that OCSD gives some authorization to burn some overtime, set up a motor officer in some of the hotspots, we could tell you where they are, it's Starbucks, it's Tarjé, it's La Pata and Hermosa, it's down in Southwest, we know the areas, and do a blitz, do an e-bike summer blitz, and ticket the folks that are breaking the law and not obeying, you know, local city code, and tow the surons. There was a big blitz of this about last summer, and every time I looked, there were surons being towed, and I love it, because you know what? Somebody's going to get hurt, and worse, I fear someone's going to be killed. That doesn't just affect the child's family, it affects the individual that hits that person, and irreparably damages everybody surrounding whoever's involved or impacted. So I encourage you to please, please, work on some sort of a workable, doable solution as soon as possible. I've heard this, and I saw it posted on Dana Point, too, on one of the social media pages, "Well, we can't pursue them because they're going to run." Well, the three little girls I saw on one bike at Starbucks, barefooted, in bathing suit tops and shorts, I don't think are criminal minds. I seriously doubt if a police officer pulled them over, or deputy pulled them over, they would run. So please, please, I beseech you, let's get something on deck soon. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Maura, followed by Craig Borner, followed by Suzanne Mooneyham.
Hi, good evening all, my name's Maura Mikulak, and I'm a resident of Capo Beach, I work in San Clemente. With the recent Supreme Court decision allowing cities to enforce no campaign and no loitering ordinances, I imagine you all and city staff will be considering how to proceed. People who are supposedly service-resistant, I presume, would be the targets for enforcement if you decide to push for that. So I want to talk about service resistance. Let me first ask you something. If someone offered you a trip to Rafa in the Gaza Strip right now, would you go? What if you traveled to Mumbai in the summer and had debilitating panic attacks and had to come home early? Should we call you travel-resistant? Well, I don't think so. I bet you'd go to Hawaii for Christmas with your family, and Zion in October, so would it be fair to describe you as travel-resistant? So when someone is described as service-resistant, you must ask, please, I mean to ask, what were they offered? What service were they offered? What did they turn down? A trip to Rafa, maybe, or Mumbai in the summer? In my six years as an advocate working with people who are homeless, I've never known anyone, not one, to refuse a permanent place to live or a cheap hotel room. People don't want to be living on the street. There's over 8,500 people countywide on the Coordinated Entry Services list, so these are people who want help, need help, and have qualified for help, and are waiting for help, and for permanent, for help that will end their homelessness, and hint, that's not shelter. So in a recent year, only 1 in 10 of those people got the permanent assistance that they need. It takes months and years sometimes to get that help, and in the meantime, those people are living on the street, because they have nowhere else to go, or they can't tolerate the explosions in Rafa or the heat and crowds in Mumbai. The Supreme Court, as you were already talking about, in the Grants Pass case, wasn't deliberating on solutions to homelessness or suggesting how communities should treat homeless people, they weren't telling us to punish people for sleeping in public, they were only saying you can, but should you? Tom asked the same question. Criminalization doesn't reduce homelessness, it creates a cycle of arrest, incarceration, and release back to homelessness, without arresting, I'm sorry, addressing the underlying issues. It sets people back, actually. The court majority may have said it's not cruel and unusual punishment, but in a county where we lack shelter beds by the thousands, permanent supportive housing by the thousands, and affordable housing by the tens of thousands, it is cruel. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Craig Borner, followed by Suzanne Mooneyham, followed by Mike Kay. Craig?
Good evening, and thanks for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Craig Borner, and, by the way, a brief introduction, I've been a homeowner in San Clemente for over 30 years, and just as a matter of interest, I was a sole caregiver to Myrtle Hanson, whose name you might recognize for the past 28 years, she was, she told everybody I was her son, but Mother Myrtle was part of the Hanson family, and so I have a special love for San Clemente, because I know all about the history from day one. But moving on, I'm also the owner and broker of a local real estate brokerage here, I was past president of the Orange County Association of Realtors, responsible for 14,000 Realtors. In addition, I'm also a certified mediator for the California Association of Realtors and the Orange County Superior Court, so I have background in law as well, and I also have my own mediation practice. More importantly, I'm also a certified marriage, family, and child therapist. I have over 14,000 hours under my belt, and I've experienced a lot of situations with disobedient kids, disrespectful kids. So, given my background, I feel qualified to comment on the developing bad behavior of a lot of these kids, and I blame it on, basically, on two major factors, and the first is a lack of respect for each other and for other people, and secondly is their lack of respect for the law. So, let me tell you my story. Two weeks ago, I was returning home at 9:30 at night, it was pitch black out on my street, and I turned, started to turn left onto my street on Avenida Madrid, and as I approached the stop sign, I was turning into the street, three young boys, I'm guessing about 14 years old, on e-bikes, ran the stop sign, made an illegal left turn in front of me, they were all dressed in dark clothes, had no lights, no helmets. So I screeched to a stop, and I hit one of the boys. I knocked him to the ground, he lay motionless there for a moment, but just when I was starting to call the paramedics, he got up slowly and got back on his bike. He was bleeding, so I was especially panicked, as you might imagine, I thought at first I had killed him. And as he mounted the bike, I grabbed his handlebars, and I said, "Look, I want to make sure that you're okay." And, by the way, his friends, his companions, made no effort, showed no concern... And by the way, his friends, his companions, made no effort, showed no concern for his well-being. So, sorry.
Unfortunately, your time is up. And I apologize, I should tell people, I mean, we have to have the same standards for everybody. I hear what you're saying, but so...
My basic drift that we need to start enforcing these laws.
Thank you. We understand that, and I think we're in that direct, going in that direction, but thank you for your comments.
Great, good to hear, thank you.
And I think I have said on other occasions to, that the county is also passing ordinances, and we're looking at those, and the state is also addressing the e-bikes. But ultimately, it's about enforcement, whether the sheriffs will enforce some of this stuff, and we're working through that, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Suzanne Mooneyham, followed by Mike Kay.
Hello, City Council, how are you tonight? I just want to concur with Suzanne Ruiz that I agree with everything she has to say. I'll reiterate that code enforcement, when she has called previously, has been in out of state of, in the state of Washington, the state of Texas, also in San Diego, California State. I just want to say I agree with what she has to say. Also wanting to know why you, Loffler, I can't pronounce, why you are temporary, but you're still running for City Council at any rate. Thank you, and bless all of you.
Thank you.
Mike Kay.
Mike, Mr. Kay?
Mr. Mayor, council members. I wanted to share an intersectionality of two issues pertinent to our town, following on the Grants Pass decision. We've heard from several people today, who've made wonderful points. And we've heard some people talking about advocacy for our unhoused peoples. I think we would all agree that those are brothers and sisters. We need to take care of them. I've never told anyone this, but I was homeless. I know exactly what it's like. I ran away at 17, lived on the beach in Solana Beach. I don't have a high school diploma. Three master's degrees, no high school diploma. My aunt, Aunt Pat, is homeless. She's been homeless for over 30 years in Hollywood. She has schizophrenia. Patricia is my mom's sister. Our family has spent decades trying to get her institutionalized. She does not want to be institutionalized. She does not want to be taken off the streets. She's full-blown schizophrenic. Her stories are horrific, horrific, beyond anything I could really describe. So with that background and a little insight, having worked at a homeless intake shelter in San Francisco, working my way through City College of San Francisco in the 80s for eight years. I did triage for homeless peoples. I was a phlebotomist, I drew blood for people with HIV. I saw the trenches, I saw what's really going on with the homeless. I think I have a pretty good insight. I would like a zero tolerance on homeless people, illegal camping in our town. Zero tolerance. I have the background, I've been there, I've got the family members still in the system. I know all sides of it very well. 54% of the fire responses in LA County are for homeless fires, 54%. San Diego, the numbers are very similar. Anaheim puts out numbers that are high as well. I can't get it from OCFA, but the numbers are very, very high. Just for fire avoidance alone, I'd like to see a zero tolerance on homeless spending the night in our fine town. If we get a fire, and we've already had a couple, but if we get one running up a canyon, takes out an area, takes out a couple houses, we will not get fire insurance. Everyone will be on the FARA program. We will have all kinds of secondary problems. I would like to help out, I would like to help the homeless. I'm not a wealthy, arrogant, non-pathetic person. I care. But I care deeper about everybody else that's here and the ramifications that would come when one of those homeless shelters has a fire that gets away. And it's going to happen. If we don't do something about it, it's just a matter of time, and the price we'll pay is just too high. So for those reasons, I hope when you guys consider legislation for Grants Pass and how we're going to respond as a town, that you'll look at a big, big picture here, and you'll consider some of those points. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other?
That's it for oral communications. So next up is motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Is there a second? I'll second. Maybe someone did already.
I didn't hear it, okay.
So I've got a motion by Mayor Pro Timon Meyer, second by Councilmember Duncan. And you can go ahead and start your votes.
All right.
Councilmember No Block, are you a yes on the vote? Okay. Carrie's 5-0. Next item on the agenda is consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action.
I actually have one on this. Came to my attention, it was a request from PTA of Marblehead Elementary. They have, they are Title I school, and they need some help for funds for fingerprints for volunteers. They're asking for about $1,800 to help pay for that fingerprinting cost, especially for their low-income families. But that occurs on the Monday before our next council meeting. So we wouldn't have time on that Tuesday afterward to talk about this or have a motion. So this would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, but are we, would this be the appropriate time to talk about that or to agendize this for tonight?
So I can pull up the standard for emergency, but that doesn't sound like a public health or safety emergency to me. But give me a minute to pull it up.
If not, it's okay, I'll put it on, I'll put it on a future agenda items.
When did we find out about, that's also...
That's also relevant, yes.
Relevant, have we found out about it?
When did you find out about it?
I found out about it yesterday.
Okay.
Okay, so that's after the posting?
So the...
My only, if there's a way to agendize it to look at reimbursement in the August meeting, that would be fine as well.
Well, you can definitely do it under items for future agendas.
I mean, I would prefer that, if we're going to look at, look at as reimbursement, because I just don't know the organization and why and who they are.
Crippling activity, work stoppages.
I'll second the getting it on the agenda for consideration to next meeting.
Okay. I'll just save it then and bring it at the end of the agenda tonight. At future agendas.
We're going to then consider it for...
This is for a future agenda.
Yes, yeah. So we'll raise that a little bit later on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda.
Close session report, City Attorney.
Thank you. The City Council met in closed session on Item A1, and direction was given, no reportable action. Thank you.
Staff Communications, I don't believe we have any tonight. No public hearings, no unfinished business. So moving on to new business, the first item under new business is consideration of a resolution calling an election in the city of San Clemente to be consolidated with the city's next general municipal election on November 5, 2024, submitting to the electors a ballot measure to increase the city's sales and use tax, sales tax by one cent by amending section 3.20.050 of Chapter 3.20 of Title III of San Clemente Municipal Code, establishing the policies and procedures for such an election, requesting that Orange County provide election services, directing the city to prepare an impartial analysis, and authorizing the filing of rebuttal argument and consideration of a resolution adopting advisory spending guidelines for the measure according to resident identified properties.
All right, do we have City Manager?
Yes, I plan to give a short report, Mayor. And first, I want to thank the mayor and council for accommodating my schedule. I had a long-planned trip and was out of the country, and so I really appreciate everybody meeting on Wednesday nights, Tuesday. But don't get used to it, we're going to go back to the Tuesday meetings. But we wanted to talk tonight about the potential of a tax measure, and no one wants to talk about it. It's very difficult. It can be very delicate to talk about, but we're going to have, you know, the civil conversation, a thing of the past. Well, it's not in San Clemente. So I'm glad that we're going to be able to talk about this. Now, this is what most people think the City Council is like when you first get elected, and this is what City Council members do, and it's true. But the reality is, this is also true. You get yelled at, and you get yelled at, and everyone gets yelled at. But really, the reality tonight is discussion is always better than argument, because an argument is to find out who is right. Discussion is to find out what is right. And what we really want to do tonight is have a discussion about what is right, what is right for our community, not who is right. It's not, it's not win and lose. It's all of us together as San Clemente and what's going to be best for our community. But the genesis for this discussion happened probably over a year ago, as we, as we first met for a retreat, and there was talk about strategies for getting sand on our beach. And we talked about the costs, we know it's very costly. And so really, the discussion of a, of a potential revenue measure started at that point. And so there's been talk about, you know, gosh, this is the first time we've heard about it. Probably is true. The mayor talked tonight about strategies to get word out to the public. We're trying to be better about that. But we've talked about it quite a bit. We haven't tried to hide the fact that we need to consider revenue in our community. It was talked about at that council retreat in the fall of 2023. We talked about it during the budget presentation, that we wouldn't have enough to sustain continuing to put sand on our beach without some additional revenue. It's been talked about at the Chamber of Commerce. We met with a large group of people in the southwest part of the community, North Beach Community Meeting, on and on. I just wanted to point out that this has been a discussion, and I want to own that. I'm the, I'm the one that has brought it up. I've been the one that's been talking about it. I don't like taxes more than anybody else, but I want to make sure that the, that the council isn't saddled with this. This is the City Manager simply looking at the economic realities of our city and knowing that we need to perhaps look at some additional revenue. Placing on the sand on the beach is expensive, and it's a new expense that we've not really completed in the past. Now, you see the asterisks there. In the past 20 years or so, we have had two very small, two small sand replenishments at North Beach. There was one that was 5,000 cubic yards, another one that was 20, I'm sorry, 12,000 cubic yards. So a total of about 17,000 cubic yards. Those are very small, probably not large enough to be sustainable, like some of the projects we're doing now. But there are some expenses that we have to be real about, and to complete just the second stage of the first phase of the Army Corps of Engineer project, we have now been told that we need to pay an additional $2 million this fall to make sure that the sand comes back. The city, in going forward, the city will be responsible for 50% of the cost of the Army Corps project. The first round, we were only responsible for 35%, and the state paid for 20 of that 35%. So we only had to pay 15%. In the future, it's likely that we will have to pay 50% of those costs. And that's going to be about $10 million every five or six years. So we're going to make sure, we're going to need to make sure that we're saving $2 or $3 million a year so that every five or six years, we have that $10 million to put additional sand on the beach. As you know, this is our first phase. Some of the beaches that we all want to be more like, whether that's Newport Beach, Huntington Beach, they're in phases 12 or 13 of the same project. It takes a long time to build up this sand. Placement of the sand, just 30,000 cubic yards in North Beach that we're looking at is going to cost about $2 million. Sand is free. Trucking it for three months and moving it around on the beach is not. And so that's, that's an expense that we're going to have to look at. So, so the reality is, we, I think, in this community more than others, because we're so familiar with what happens in our coastal region, we understand that sand placement can be expensive. So people have said, but why would you need $10 million? I think that's a fair question. If you look at about $10 million a year, we need about $2 million a year to save for the Army Corps project, which we've talked about. And then placement of about 100,000 cubic yards of sand on the beach will be about $7 million a year, roughly. If we wanted to try and meet that mark, if we wanted to try and get 100,000 cubic yards of sand on our beaches, not necessarily where the Army Corps project is, but on the other beaches of the community, that'd be around $7 million a year. Then you probably have about $1 million in maintenance for the beach trail and beach grooming. Every fall, we try to take that sand and push it towards the shore so that we have less erosion. All those things cost, all those things cost money. So there was a survey that was done, that was, has been referred to a couple of times tonight, that indicated that 62% of our population believes there are at least great need or some need for additional revenue in our community. And initially, that support was, would say that they are in support of a tax measure. But again, that's a general purpose tax. And so I just want to, I want to move through this survey a little bit, because I think it's more important that we have a discussion on some other items. But, but why then did we go to a general service tax? There was a lot of people saying, you know, we really, this discussion has been all about sand. It's been 100% about sand, it's been about the coast, let's stick to that. That's what the residents want, let's stick with that. Well, in the survey, you can see here that actually keeping public safest, keeping public areas safe and clean, which might also relate to the beach, frankly. But, but public safety is another issue that has been of concern to our residents. It wasn't, it was only a year ago when, remember, homelessness was probably our biggest concern and our biggest crisis, and we were looking at that. When sand right now is by far our biggest issue, but the residents haven't forgotten those days of homelessness and some dealing with some of that. So public safety and other issues started to indicate at above, at above 90% that they were concerned about maintaining emergency response times, and yes, beach access, but also keeping areas safe and clean. So it was, well, if we, if we want to keep everyone happy, maybe we need to do a general measure. Well, there's, there's, it's a little bit confusing, and this is going to be the worst presentation I've ever given. I've already, I've already, I've already decided that that's, this is going to be the most boring presentation you've ever seen, but at least we need to talk about these issues. So a special purpose tax in the state of California, when you want to pass a tax for a specific purpose, you have to meet a two-thirds threshold. Now, if you pass a general tax, it's a 50% threshold. Now, you would think it was just the opposite. Man, if you have to do something specific, that should, that should be able to be passed easier than just a general tax. But the reality is, it's actually easier to pass, in theory, a specific tax. We're going to spend all the money on the beach. In theory, that's an easier tax to pass, so there's a higher threshold, and it must beat that two-thirds threshold. And then the special purpose tax, some of the guidance we need from the City Council is, what does that, what does that mean? When we talk about our coastal resources, sand is clear, but does that include the access? Things like the stairs, the crossings of the railroad, the T Street overpass. So what exactly is it that we are wanting to do, should a, should a measure be placed on the agenda? And should the City Council want to do that with a special purpose tax? What about the pier? Should that be included? Is that part of our coastal resource, the beach trail and the bridges from the beaches trail? Or do we want to really focus in on, it's on sand? That's all we want, is to spend this money on sand? And trust me, we could spend all this money and more on sand if we wanted to. Sand is not a, is not a cheap process. So then if you're looking at a more general tax, it would have to pass at 50% for coastal resources and public safety, it would certainly include the coastal resources listed above. We would probably very much like to include additional funding for park rangers, OCSD, OCFA, because if you're going to go to that general tax, you bring in those public safety issues that showed up in the survey. Street maintenance showed up, stormwater collection and recycling. Those kinds of things are important to the residents as well. But again, I want to, I want to reiterate that the genesis for this discussion was about sand. It was about our coast. So I just want to make sure that we keep that in the forefront of our thoughts. So why can other cities afford sand and we cannot? These are important slides, but I think it's important for us to understand a little bit more about our community and how it's structured financially. So this, I tried to add colors, so it wasn't as boring, but this is still a really boring slide. But what you see here is the city of San Clemente, the city of Newport Beach, and the city of Laguna Beach. San Clemente has about 64,300 people. Newport Beach, 85,200, and Laguna Beach, 23,000. So a much smaller city, but again, a coastal city in our area. And what this is showing is, you can see in the first part of the graph there, the property tax. The, San Clemente is the orange. You can see Newport Beach with property taxes in the blue, and then Laguna Beach is in the teal? Is that teal? I'll call it teal. We'll call it something like that, teal. And then in sales tax, you can see the next columns there, you can see the orange, the blue, and the green again. The end column is probably the big one. You can see that essentially San Clemente, with a population of 64,000, has a, gets from its taxes about 60 million. Newport Beach, 218 million. And a much smaller city, Laguna Beach, 66 million. So you can see per capita, what we're generating through our taxes in San Clemente is $933 per person through taxes. In Newport Beach, 2,500, and in Laguna... San Clemente is $933 per person through taxes. In Newport Beach, 2,500, and in Laguna Beach, 2,800. So those are other beach communities, but, 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 so let's compare ourselves a little bit with our neighboring communities, and that is much more in line. You can see we're much more in line with Dana Point and San Juan Capistrano. If you look at kind of the same idea here, the revenue generated per capita, we're, we're a little bit lower than Dana Point and a little bit higher than San Juan Capistrano, but very, very comparable with our neighbors. Although, our neighbors are not coastal cities, they don't have the issues of beach that we do. Now, Dana Point is on the coast, but remember, the only beach that they actually have to take care of is Baby Beach, and that, that very small beach. The rest of their beaches, Doheny is a state beach, and they have, they have other resources for their beach maintenance. So if, if, and again, this is all just hyperbolic a little bit, but San Clemente, if we added that 1% tax, we would still be in the range of the Dana Point, San Juan Capistrano, and, and, and what we currently are in San Clemente. It doesn't push us up anywhere near Newport Beach and Laguna Beach. But it does, does help us be a little bit more competitive with those. But we will never, nor do we want to be like those other cities, because we talked a little bit about city structure. So cities are structured very differently with their revenue. And one of the things that's been very clear to me is that some cities like Newport and Dana Point obtain significant funding through their transit occupancy tax. That's a hotel tax. They have very large hotels. I, I looked up a, one of the hotels in Dana Point today. It has 378 hotel rooms. We don't have that many in our community. So, and that's just one of their hotels. That is not how we wanted our city to be built. We didn't want to have a row of hotels on our beach. We didn't want to have a lot of hotels in this community. We didn't want it to be that kind of a community. And then some cities are very much sales tax cities, like what you might see in San Juan Capistrano or Newport Beach, and they might have Costcos or car dealerships, and they're structured that way. And then most all cities get significant revenue, revenue from property tax. Well, we do. We are very much a neighborhood community. We don't have a lot of hotels. We don't have a lot of commercial, and that's the way we want it. And that's the way we like it. But to do some of those other things that we want, want to accomplish on our shoreline, we're going to have to come up with some other revenue. Now, we could, we could start to try and get approved for hotels and, and commercial. That will take some time. I don't know that we have that much time. We have, we don't have a lot of vacant land. This is essentially a built-out community. So we've structured ourselves to be a community of neighborhoods, I do believe. So some other considerations, though, we need to think about what happens if we either choose not to go forward with a revenue measure, or if it gets defeated. We have to be honest, and we have to be fair with ourselves. But if additional revenue isn't identified, should we be going and getting a scoop permit? That's about 3/4 of a million dollars the city would need to spend, but if there's no money for sand, do we, do we want to have that permit if there's, if we don't have the resources to place sand on the beach? Or, or coastal administrator? That, they're, you know, Les Lea is amazing, but her job is to bring sand here. And if we, and if we don't have resources for sand, we have to, we have to think about, is that, is, is that a position that makes sense for the city? We also need to think about budget cuts and reallocation of resources, and I'll get into that a little bit and, and show you some of the challenges with doing that. Or do we continue with past practice? So far in the past, we haven't placed sand on the beach. Maybe, maybe we just continue with that past practice, and, and we get some of the sand back when we get the south swell, and, and, and maybe that's, we, we continue with the, the past practice, and we haven't, we haven't had any major sand placement on the beach until this year. Now, there was a question, if a special purpose tax is considered, could the proposal be lowered to 3/4 of a cent instead of a, a 1-cent sales tax? Yes. 3/4 of a cent sales tax increase would generate about 10.1 million. So it would be essentially what we'd be looking for, for coastal issues. So, so should the city council choose to move in the direction of a targeted tax, we would also suggest then that you lower that to a 3/4 cent rather than a 1-cent sales tax. So, oh, stop, oh, there you go. So reallocation of resources. I think this is a really, really, again, important, although maybe boring slide. So the city of San Clemente General Fund is about $80 million. And there, if we just made a 10% cut across, cut across the board, we generate 8 million. Pretty simple math there. The challenge is that the public safety is the highest expense in the city. It's $39 million. It's about 50% of our budget, and you can see there what we spend on those. And you can see the chart to the right came right out of the budget. You can see that our major expenditures come from public safety, and then from public works maintenance, which is maintaining our parks, our streets, sidewalks, those kinds of things. That's, that's our next highest expense at about 16.45 million. So between those two, you, it's about 70%. It's very, very uncommon for city councils to reduce the amount of public safety in a community. And I think our community, by its survey, is saying, we're still concerned about public safety. We don't want you to reduce public safety. Most council members don't want to reduce maintenance of streets, maintenance of parks, maintenance of other public spaces. We heard, we heard a gentleman tonight, the city owns property. We need to maintain it. He's right. And I apologize, I've been out of town and missed his emails, but yes, city property needs to be maintained so that it's, so that it's safe. But if a, if public safety and maintenance are not reduced by the 10%, to achieve the $8 million reallocation would require about a one-third reduction in the remaining budgets, because there's only about $24 million left out of, after you take care of public safety and the public works maintenance. So you'd need to cut about a third. So essentially, when you think about it this way, think about your Parks and Recreation Department. You'd have to cut out a third of your Parks and Recreation Department and programs in order to generate those, those kinds of revenues. So again, these aren't easy just things to talk about, but they're things we need to talk about in order to have a, a, a robust and honest conversation. So there's a lot of options for the city council, of course, and I tried to put a few of them down so that you guys could consider them. One would be to place a, a measure on the ballot, allowing residents to vote on the measure. That's one. That's what's before you tonight. You could do that. You could continue the item to a date certain, or reinstate the August City Council meeting if you felt like there needed to be further discussion. So if we get done with the meeting tonight, and you wanted to discuss it further, or you wanted staff to get you more information or different information, we could do that. I will say that the meeting that we have on August 6th would be the last opportunity we would probably have to talk about it. It's got to be to the registrar of voters no later than August 9th. And we would need a couple of days to prepare everything. So that would just be the very last opportunity for us to do it. Or you could table the measure for future consideration, maybe in 2026. That puts us a little bit further behind the eight ball. But, but, but again, that's certainly, it's something the city council could do. You could direct staff to prepare documents for a special purpose tax, instead of a general tax, instead of including public safety and storm drainage and some of these other things. Again, the genesis of this conversation was sand. That was the general, that was really what we were talking about. And if, if we, if we believe that, and we believe that's what our residents want in this community, and we work hard, perhaps we can meet that two-thirds threshold. Or you could vote against placing it on, the measure on the ballot altogether. So, so again, that's a, a big range of options. Again, these are, these are delicate conversations, are very difficult to have, but, but they're, they're necessary, especially in a community that is facing some of the challenges that we are on our, on our beaches, and with our bluffs near the beaches, and our beach trail, and our Mariposa Bridge. Those are things that the city council has, has placed a high priority on. And so I'm, I'm just trying to find a way to, to allow the, the residents to let us know whether or not those are the same priorities. The council has made it clear. They're the, certainly the priority of the council. But with that, Mayor, I'm, I'm open to questions, or we can certainly listen to comments. And it looks like the city attorney wants me to say something, but I'm not sure what it is. So give me something.
There's a revised, updated resolution and ordinance at the dais, and it's been published online, and it's in the back for people to review. It accomplishes the same purpose as the one that was originally circumstated, circulated, but it has some updated legal ease in it.
So anybody that wants to read that, you, it's in the back, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. It's also online.
All right. Do you want to open up the questions right now, or does anyone have any serious questions? Do you want to hear from the public first?
I've just got one question. So the cost per sand under, under either option, could you just kind of give a, I know you can't say exactly what sand costs per square yard in the future, but could you just give us a basic cost if we were, what that 8 million kind of looks like?
Sure. So every five to six years, a lot of that will depend on how long the, the sand stays on our beach. Every five or six years, the Army Corps of Engineers will come in and they will replenish our beach. And it, we, it's going, 50% of that cost is going to be about $10 million. It starts at nine, kind of moves up, and by the end, 50 years out, it's like 12 or 13 million. So give or take, it's about 10 million every five or six years. So we would need to save 2 million a year or so to make sure that we have money in the bank, so that when it's time to have that new replenishment with the Army Corps project, the money's there, ready to go, and we send it out. So that's 2 million a year-ish. And I think I have a slide on that. Let me go back.
I would only add that we did get a grant of 800,000 to find a nearer borrow site, a borrow site that's closer, that would reduce some of that cost, hopefully. But all, all this is just speculation right now.
Yes. Yeah, we hope, we, we hope we get those grants. Now, placement of, we, we would hope with, if we're going to get a scoop permit, to make it worthwhile, we want to find probably about 100,000 cubic yards of sand to put on the various beaches in the community on an annual basis. This year, we've been able to find 30,000 of, of the, of the sand that comes from the Santa Ana River. That's the same sand that both Huntington Beach and Newport Beach put on their beaches on a regular basis. We, we have access to 30,000 cubic yards of that. To ship that from the Santa Ana River and place it and move it on our beach, on North Beach, is going to cost right around $2 million. So, and, and we believe, you know, we went out on bids, that's, that's the current bid price, right? So I would anticipate, if you're going to put 100,000 cubic yards, that you're going to be around $7 million if we, if we want to get 100,000 cubic yards a year on our beach. And then I think you've got to reserve some money for, again, beach grooming, getting that sand pushed up so that it doesn't wash away during the king tides. We've still got some maintenance that we're going to have to do on the beach trail and some of those kinds of things. So that's, that's a breakdown of why it's going to, to really keep our beaches healthy is probably in the neighborhood of $10 million. It might be 6 million one year and 12 million the next, but in the neighborhood of $10 million a year.
So roughly 90,000 cubic yards of sand per year if we generated that income, and we just put like a little over 100,000 cubic yards on our beach at the pier this last dredging?
112.
112. So we could do about that same amount, give or take, every year, we could be putting that on the beach somewhere.
That's what we would, that's what we would shoot for. That's a mark I think we should shoot for. Again, now, remember, on a, on a targeted tax, these funds would go into a separate account that can only be used for this. So that's, that's a distinction between the, the special purpose tax and the general tax. The general tax, let's be honest, it goes to the general fund. At that point, that's why we put a spending plan in here for the city council. We would want the city council to pass a resolution saying, hey, if we, if we're going to do this with the general tax, this is how we're going to spend it. But I, but let's be honest. I, I want to be really honest with people. A future council could change that. And so, so we, we just have to be really honest about what we're talking about here. This is, this is important to our community. A dedicated tax, if we can work hard, and if the residents really want to see that passed, it can only be used for the purpose that it is generated for, which in this case would be coastal issues. So that's the difference between the two. And we just want to be, we want to go into this eyes wide open and have a real, honest and adult conversation with our community. It's not easy to talk about these things. The general tax, by the survey, the general tax looks like it would be much easier to pass. We fall 2 or 3% perhaps low on the targeted tax. But I believe that if we educate our residents and we let them know that, you know, this, this tax is going to be 100% committed to the beach, I think that we might be able to build some of that trust and confidence in the community, and we, I think we could maybe push it over the, the finish line.
Thank you. So we, we've heard of, from a lot of community members, I have, and I'd like to hear from more. So I think that's the best way to...
So just to be clear, if we did a targeted tax of the 67% threshold, then there is no money there for security or public safety?
That's correct.
Thank you.
This would be just for coastal issues. That's correct.
All right. Let's, how many speakers do we have?
Well, yes, because we'd be lowering it to 3/4 of a cent instead of 1 cent. That's correct.
How many speakers?
About 10 speakers right now.
Okay. Let's, if you could come up here, you call the first four or five speakers, and we'll get you a queue.
Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Louise Herbert, followed by Ken Pochikai, followed by Christopher Butler, followed by Cameron Cosgrove. Amanda?
Hi. I have a quick PowerPoint presentation. I want to state to the members of the public who are here that the OC Taxpayers Association submitted a letter, and it's back there in the folder. And what they said is that, one of the things that they said is that many residents, families, and small business, businesses are already struggling with the high cost of living, high inflation, and the highest in the nation statewide sales tax, adding another layer of, of taxation on top of what, that is not the solution. While we understand that the need for increased revenue, raising taxes on small businesses and local families will continue to hurt the economy. I think that's really significant. Next slide, please. Basically, on July 10th, the California Coast Commission awarded $1.5 million in the local coastal program, and the staff report did not include that. So I hope that should have been included. Next slide. I skipped that slide for a reason, but I wanted to get to this part. Two-thirds of voters are required to approve special taxes. Special taxes require approval from two-thirds of vocal, local voters. A special tax is a tax that meets one of the following conditions. Special purpose district tax, all taxes other than property taxes for infrastructure bonds levied by special districts, school districts, and community colleges are special taxes. Tax dedicated to a specific purpose, a city or county tax dedicated to a specific purpose or specific purposes, including a tax for a specific purpose deposited to the agency general fund, is a special tax. All non-property taxes that cities and counties are authorized to levy may be raised as special taxes. So I'm just concerned, in the staff report, I think there is, there's a little bit of confusion regarding what kind of tax this is. Next, oh, so, next slide. Determine the applicable voter approval threshold. All government taxes fall into one of three categories. New local government taxes generally can be placed into one of the three categories: property taxes to finance debt, general taxes, and special taxes. So I'm going to go to next figure. Here is, next slide, please. Here's a Venn diagram. It looks complicated, scary. Next slide, please. By breaking it down, it basically mentions, it gives you then outline of where to go, answering no, yes, to what it, what it is. So basically, you know, this tax is not a, add the lower in property tax, use for finance infrastructure, so there's no. Next slide. So if you go on to the left side, what is a special district, school, district or community college, district levy tax, no. Will the, will the tax be levied on parcels of property? No. Will this tax be dedicated to a specific purpose? Yes. This tax is a special tax and requires approval from two-thirds of vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Louise Herbert, followed by Ken Pochikai, followed by Christopher Butler.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I want to thank you, Andy, for a really good presentation, as much as you felt you hadn't done well. It helped me to clarify many things within the project and how to maintain our beaches, which is our major economic process here in town to be able to attract income. I'm a city resident, as of last week, 41 years. And I've watched the beaches and the changes within our town over that period of time, some good, some bad, some pretty ugly. I'm basically for the city tax and to help us financially take care of our obligations and meet the needs of our city. But I do have concerns that the passing of this tax may become a tool as a political leverage, thus double-edged sword. If the reasoning of any of the city council members is to use this against anyone's candidacy in future races, then I'd be very disappointed and disillusioned by the ethical moral compass of the city council member. Only time will tell on that. If the city determines to put this on the ballot, I'm still grappling a little bit with whether or not it should be a specific tax or a general tax. Unfortunately, if it is a specific tax and we have an oh shit problem in town, or we have the bridge at T Street crumble and fall, then we have no bridge. So specific tax can be very ankle-wating. A general tax can give us a little more latitude to take care of other items that are directly attached to the beach. A general tax can give us the ability to meet the other needs of city members who have indicated that safety is a big issue as well. And safety does pertain a lot to our beach. If we don't have safety at our pier, at our beaches, our income that is... If we don't have safety at our pier, at our beaches, our income that is being generated by those who come to this town outside and don't feel safe to be here will be greatly affected as well. I don't see how we can specify something that has a broader reach than putting it on a specific tax. Thank you very much, and really, it was a good presentation.
Thank you for your comments.
Counsel, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight, and thank you for your service. I appreciate it. I basically love our beaches, you can see my shirt, and you always see me around all these things. I really do appreciate our beaches, and it's the reason that I moved here. And I think it's the reason that a lot of our businesses do well, right? I mean, you saw that concert on the beach, it was amazing. I mean, and the people that generates and the businesses, taxes that that generates, I don't even think we really understand what that total can be in the future if we have good beaches. So maybe we can put a little bit of money thought just around the revenue that those activities generate. That said, I've never voted for a tax increase in my life. I'm a conservative individual, and I honestly, I've been voting my whole life since I'm 18. I never voted for a tax. So general taxes I struggle with because I do think they get abused. I mean, I got 900 bucks from the governor the last two years for, I don't even know why, it just showed up in my, right? I got a credit card and I got something else. I thought it was a scam. But he's paying me money, I don't know why. You know, you can speculate. But we all got that money, I think, or some of us did. Or maybe I was the only one in the crowd. It was pretty surprising.
That's all you got?
Yeah, sorry. Might have got ripped off, I'll have to talk to other people. Anyway, I can support a specific tax. And I think Andy did a great job of laying out, you know, the differences. Now, what is a specific task? Well, maybe it is. It goes to beach trail, beach only, I don't know. I don't know what we can get away with there. But I can't support a general tax. It's just not, I've seen it abused too many times and I've seen it go in the favor of government where it really didn't help the complete community. So additionally, I would say, please work to make sure we understand the work that's going on with the sand replenishment. You know, we have, I'm getting a little lost. We have a meeting Thursday, I think, at 4 o'clock or something here with Leslie and maybe, you know, the community meeting. But how does all that stuff tie together? Because I thought somebody was giving us money for that, too. Maybe I'm wrong. We also have ACTA who wants to, you know, protect the rail, which I do believe sand is the answer. So how does all that come into play? And I hate to confuse things, but life's never that easy and we hate to make Andy's life too easy, you know? It'd be pretty good. But I can't support a specific tax, no doubt. I don't support general taxes. And I would ask that you please help us better understand how all the ACTA plays out and the sand replenishment and nourishment activities play out. But thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Butler, followed by Cameron Cosgrove, followed by Michelle Brooks, followed by Steve Lang.
Good evening. First, my name is Christopher Butler. I love San Clemente, I love our beaches. Mayor, council members, and city manager, I appreciate what each of you has been doing for our community and your ability to work together this year in a civil capacity and get things accomplished while taking a lot of punches at the same time. First, I speak as the president of the North Beach Community Association. As a community association, we cannot endorse an issue like a tax. However, we can suggest make suggestions that would assist the community in the event that there were a tax. If you were to vote to put this on the ballot, we would suggest you direct staff to develop plans for other sources of revenue in parallel. Has been mentioned that this is a bedroom community, is also a beach, sand, tourist, and hospitality community, and we should look to develop strategies around this to attract more responsible hospitality in San Clemente so we can leverage TOT taxes in the future to offset these funding deficits for sand. We should reprioritize existing resources and staff on all projects that provide growth and revitalization in San Clemente while tabling projects that have heavy costs from consulting or in staff time with no real short-term, medium-term, or long-term benefit. We also should support finishing the commitments that we've been made so far to clean up North Beach like street cleaning that would attract more patronage and new business coming into town. As an individual and a business owner in this community, I believe this is a beach community, and I support efforts to nourish and protect and expand our beaches. The beaches are the lifeblood and foundation of our community. I support putting this issue on the ballot and letting the community decide if they want to be a beach community while also putting measures in place to ensure if we were to approve this tax, the money would be spent for sand and only sand, a direct tax, not for people and studies, for actual sand at the lowest price and the best quality on a continuous basis. That being said, I would support a small portion of the funds being dedicated to a team who could solicit grants and fun matching for sand and coastal preservation. If you were to do a general tax, I would suggest putting a language in the measure that says if the money is not used for sand and public safety with clear language that if the money were used for pension funds or other items not intended or reported by an outside independent monitor, that the tax would be eliminated or reduced back to previous rate. Although the tax will be an increase to families with low income, I would say those are the people that use the beaches the most. And I would say if you asked them, if they were to make an additional $400 or $500 investment a year, they would say that's the best money spent because it's one of the few things they have access to without any additional cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cameron, followed by Michelle Brooks, followed by Steve Lang, followed by Jeff Berg.
Hello, thanks for having this important discussion tonight. I do support the 1% sales tax. I vacillate general specific, but I really think the tent being bigger is better. This is the specific spending priorities. I think we could work away to get that pledge by council members and candidates to keep us on track. By the way, you can change a general plan with three votes, too. So let's not get too carried away that people would just go run away. We can hold people accountable. It's really evident that San Clemente is losing its beaches due to sand erosion and the replacement of sand by the Army Corps of Engineers has shown us it can be done well. And we're fortunate we got the state to help us out with that cost. But moving forward, the city's going to need to foot their share of the bill, and over the life of the project, it's $116 million. And as Andy stated, it's about, what, 2.5 million every year, so we don't have the balloon payment when it's due. So sand replenishment and retention are expensive capital investments. It's just the way it is. To fund comprehensive beach protection efforts, which is sand access and pier maintenance, we're hearing tonight that it's about $10 million a year. Okay, that's the truth, let's deal with it. So for those that believe we can simply trim the budget, I think Andy talked about it, you know, 50% of our budget's for public safety, we can't cut that. And we have to keep in mind that San Clemente is a village by the sea. A village, that means neighborhoods. We're a collection of neighborhoods. And we talked about Dana Point, so they have resorts along their coastlines. We have neighborhoods. Dana Point collects 10% TOT, and that represents 33% of their budget. So do we, 10% of our budget. Our 10% of our TOT is collected as well, but it's only 4%. We're not a hotel town. We're a residential town. That's why we live here. It's why we all value the residential environment. No one likes the ideas of additional taxes, but we must recognize that to restore our beaches and enhance our public safety, new revenue is needed. So that's why I'm here to support moving forward with a sales tax increase of 1%. Thanks.
Thank you.
Michelle Brooks, followed by Steve Lang, followed by Jeff Berg, followed by Donna Vedrine.
Hey, council and staff, happy summer. I'm Michelle Brooks, and I was told to say I represent myself personally, not my Human Affairs Committee, so I just wanted to make that clear. I understand that some might think we're already taxed like crazy in this state, but the difference here is that the money stays here and can't be used for anything else. I think that fact alone is what will breed the most trust. I, too, support putting this to the voters in November and keeping it specific to sand. I like what Chris Butler said about if the money is misspent, then the tax goes away. That might be a neat idea to consider. Councilwoman Duncan said in his opening comments earlier that San Clemente is called the center of the surfing universe, which is a pretty incredible title. In my opinion, then we have a duty to preserve our beaches. We weren't called the Costco or the Supermall center of the universe. Surfing requires beaches, beaches require maintenance, and maintenance unfortunately costs millions of dollars. So where will we cut the money to pay for this? I urge you to please consider a special purpose tax this evening and put it to the voters. A lot of people are skeptical of government spending, so having this tightly dictated will show transparency with exactly how this money will be spent. The survey showed favorably for the proposed tax with the priority being sand. So I say let's fine-tune the details, include the public in those discussions, and move forward. Like Mr. Cosgrove said, it is what it is. It costs $10 million a year, we're a beach town, we just have to figure out how to come up with the money. I also thought that the survey you gave out to the public was a great lead to get the pulse on the residents and their priorities. I thought it was really positive to see overall, people feel really good with the way things are going. So I just want to take two quick seconds to say that I feel it's the top-down leadership of a wonderful city manager and the staff. I think our, I really hope that the morale is up because I really think you guys are doing an amazing job at the city, and I thank you for that. I think a city manager who proposes a tax is really risky, but your presentation was amazing, and I think that anybody that knows City Manager Hall can trust his due diligence. He does the research, and I really trust his advice in guiding us this way, and I hope you guys really listened to that presentation. I thought it was very solid. I, too, also love our volunteer police. I emailed Andy just about that last week, that exact same thing, so thank you. Oh, last quick thing with my last 30 seconds. If sand isn't needed one year, if per se that money, if we had leftover money from the sand and we don't need it, could that then maybe go elsewhere? So maybe that could be a factor as well that could sway people. If we don't have to use all the money one year, let's designate maybe another cause for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Lang, followed by Jeff Berg, followed by Donna Vedrine.
Gentlemen, unlike some people here, I like all you guys. Thank you very much. I would like to echo the last, I think, six speakers' sentiments and comments. I agree 100%. In fact, if tonight was December 16, 70, 73, and we were in Boston, I'd be down with the boys, putting on feathers and painting lipstick on my face and throwing the tea in the water. And I don't, I've never voted for a tax, but this is not that. This is not a national issue, this is not MAGA v. woke. This is sand, and we're a sand community, echoing everything everybody else said. I really appreciate what Andy's done, I appreciate what council's done. I think this is a no-brainer. I think we don't have any choice. I live really close to the beach and look at it daily, and we've had a south swell running for the last two weeks, and we have many more coming. We're just in the middle of the summer season, and we've lost, on July 4th, there was beach, there was sand all over Calafia and Cypress Shore, and it's, most of it's gone. And it goes north. And every time, every wave that comes in takes sand. And we've lost 70 to 80% of this sand in our bite or the embayment from Dana Point to Cotton's Point in the last 10, 15 years. It's gone. And so it's achieved catastrophic levels of loss. And the only way that we can fix it, man's problem, is by paying money, and we don't have any money. I think the city's run very efficiently. I applaud our council today and past councils. I love San Clemente. I don't have a complaint. I just went to the restroom and there was even hand towels instead of the blower. And so, but all I'm saying is that we don't have any choice. I agree with everything Andy said tonight. And really, truly, the only reason I pay my taxes is I don't go to prison. And I vote 100% for a dedicated tax for sand. Thank you for all you do, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Jeff Berg, followed by Donna Vedrine, followed by Tim Brown.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. Steve Lang's a tough act to follow, I'm going to keep it quick. First of all, great presentation, a lot of great comments. My name's Jeff Berg, I live in San Clemente. I'm from Florida. In Florida, we don't like taxes, and I kind of share the same sentiment that a lot of people have spoken about, both on taxes, but also the need for us to have sand because of all the things that's been discussed. I represent Bring Back Our Beaches, and, you know, we play a big role in advocating for sand replenishment and replacing the sand, the natural sand sources that have been choked off. You know, to those who are concerned about additional burden on our citizens, which is a very fair statement in this age of inflation and higher taxes, I'd just like to point out a few statistics that show the importance of the beaches to Orange County and San Clemente. This comes from a workshop that took place last week that Mayor Cabral was at in Les Lea. There's 150 million day visits generated annually to beaches in Southern California, and these beaches account for $30.1 billion of visitor spending in 2023. As it specifically relates to Orange County, tourism spending largely driven by coastal areas about $5.8 billion, and there's 132,000 jobs linked to tourism, with most of that coming from the coastal economy. So yes, taxes suck, nobody wants to see taxes for the most part, but a loss of beaches here in San Clemente would be catastrophic to our economy. And so it's just important to put it in perspective. I think, you know, staff and council do a great job of doing that, but as we get more data, I think it's important to arm our citizens and people who care about this economy with that information. So I'm still digesting the general tax versus the special purpose tax, you know, speaking on behalf of Bring Back Our Beaches and putting a marketing hat on and thinking about how I would advocate this to the people that kind of follow what we do and like what we do. A special purpose tax, even though it has a higher hurdle, I think is a lot easier to get across the finish line. You know, this is about sand, it's about our beaches. You know, public safety is incredibly important, but that general tax has a little bit the feeling of a grab bag. I mean, I think it's been well-designed, and I don't mean to be dismissive of it or to deride it, but I do think we need to take all that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Vedrine, followed by Tim Brown.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I oppose increasing taxes with the proposed 1% additional sales tax for the benefit of the San Clemente General Fund. It will be informative to hear council discussions and votes on this proposed 1% increase in our taxes, including 911 response time without addressing San Clemente's lack of emergency services and hospital care for our 60,000 residents is irresponsible. The Mission Hospital in Laguna Beach on the PCH is closing, which will further impact emergency and hospital care for San Clemente residents. I live in San Clemente, am a homeowner, and own a business in San Clemente. I pay taxes. This proposed tax increase is unanticipated and being rushed to meet a deadline to be included on the ballot for our November 5th election. You have an operating budget and have been elected to oversee city services to include firefighter, police, emergency response services, street and road repair, keeping public safe spaces, safe and clean, protecting coastal water quality and our local drinking water supply. Do your job as our elected officials without asking San Clemente to pay more in taxes. If the 1% tax increase is about funding sand replacement and retention, legally designate that clearly on the ballot and let the voters decide. So I, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Brown.
Mayor, council, I'm grateful the opportunity to address you tonight. Andy did a wonderful job on the presentation. I think this is, you've got an important choice before you tonight, and the speakers today have done incredible work on delineating the issues and providing a tremendous amount of clarity around really what you're deciding. I think what I'll do is approach it some perspective of my experience as an elected official. You know, putting your name in the ring to serve as on city council is, it's a bit of a masochistic endeavor. a, it's a bit of a masochistic endeavor, right? You have to augment a lot of pain and suffering and boredom and other things that happen during the whole process. But every once in a while, there comes a moment of time, an opportunity, where you actually do something consequential, where you actually can do something that for decades can make our community better. And in the moment, there's always going to be friction. There's always going to be people who aren't going to like that action. I'll give you one example. When we read, when we redid PCH, where we put in the dedicated bike lanes there, it felt like it was a good decision. It felt like it was something that's, when we put it in there, and Facebook and a lot of the community really savaged us for some period of time about how it was designated and the setup and other things like that, and it felt like we did the wrong thing. Time has borne out that that has been an incredible community asset. And so at the time, in the moments, you have to have political courage to do the right thing and know that some things are worth having that courage for. And this is one of those things that I'm, I'm, I was trying to think back on my time to think of something that was as consequential as this, and I'm struggling. I'm really struggling with it. To be able to fund sand replenishment on our beaches for decades to come is an incredible opportunity, and it would be just a crime to be able to have this moment pass us by. I, by the way, I, I support the special purpose tax. I think it's something that the voters can, can do, but I will say that people ask me, what was it about serving on city council? I says, every once in a while. I, by the way, I have PTSD when I come to these meetings, so I watch like the comments, and I just want, I gotta get out of here. I don't know why I'm here. I gotta go sit in my car and watch it on, on my phone. But every once in a while, when you're driving down the road, like PCH, or you pass a building, and you think, you know what? I had a hand in that. I did something I felt was positive for the community. I think this will be one of those things. I think that staff has done a wonderful job setting it for you. I believe that this council has an opportunity to do something that you're, you're not only be able to enjoy, but you'll be able to tell your kids about, and your grandkids, and all these things will happen, and this is that moment. So I, I hope you guys can find a path to be able to put something on the ballot, allow the people to use their voice. I think they will come through and support what you put on the ballot, but this is that moment, and so I encourage you to make the best choice possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Two other speakers?
That was our final speaker.
All right, then, we'll have discussion, and I'll, I'll start off since Andy and I spent most of the morning working some of this stuff out, and I'll tell you my, my honest opinions about my reaction to the initial report. And I had concerns, and I still have concerns. And most of those concerns arise out of the fact that we're, we were trying to get a, an easier solution, a lower threshold tax proposal. And so we threw in there all the stuff that, you know, you, that, that sounded good, or was good, or pulled good, from, you know, firefighters to 911, to all the things that the community said were important to them. And in the end, I think we, we do ourselves a disservice when we try and address all those needs with, with a, a general tax, because then, as a city council, if we get a tax that allows us to spend it on anything in the general tax, that's probably what's going to end up happening in the end. And, you know, as a need comes up, that, we're going to spend it on, 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 on a firefighter program, or, or a 911 program. And I, when I started this whole process, I, I was more concerned about how we restore our beaches, how we create the beach community that we all deserve and love, and I know it's not there right now. It, it, it doesn't exist. You walk down to North Beach and you see rocks. You see what happened earlier, you know, before we put the first tranche of sand. I mean, we didn't have a beach. Those are all the things that, that concerned me, and, and in the end today, you know, I, I told Andy this morning, I think we need to look at refining this proposal a little bit, hearing from the community, seeing what their needs and concerns are, and even, maybe even lowering the tax, because I don't think all the things that we've listed in that, that proposed budget are, are needed. I, I know that what I want to spend the money on is the restoration of our beach, and I have a little presentation, so if we can bring that up, I will. I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the projects that we have ongoing, and Andy sort of took some of that away from me, so, but that's all right. You know, this is the next slide. I, I wanted to take a look at all, all the programs that we have, and where we're spending the money, and where the money needs to be spent. We, we keep talking about this 50-year beach project with the federal government. Didn't go, get off to a good start, but it's, 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 it's going well right now. We delivered half our, our sand, 110,000 cubic yards of, of sand. I know being there on the beach this past weekend, on the 4th of July, and seeing the people there, being there on the concert, at the concert, I know that's what the people of San Clemente want, and that's what I want to, want to see. I'd like to see the beach twice as big as that, and with the next tranche, we will see another at least 10, 20 yards of beach. We know that's going to cost us $5 million a year, or $10 million, $10 million a year, and that's under the current structure. We don't know, you know, what will happen with the federal government, whether it'll be a 50-50 split, or whether they'll, they'll want us to pay a larger contribution, or with inflation, what that, that amount of money is. But it's a significant amount of money. And you look at that photo there of, of this, this, this past few weeks, and the enjoyment that it brought to, to people and residents, including myself, and I think every one of us that are there, that costs money. That money, as Andy pointed out, is not in the budget right now, and there isn't anywhere to cut it, and that's been pretty clear. We have the North Beach Emergency Sand Project that we, we started a, a week ago, or, or it was scheduled to start a week ago, which is costing us a couple of million dollars. We need that sand. We need to restore the beach there in the North Beach. We have the Winter Beach Burn Project, which costs us money every year to move the sand up higher to protect it during the winter, winter storm season. We have the Opportunistic Sand Placement Project, or the SCOOP Program, that's going to cost us $800,000. And that only is for the opportunity to buy the sand that we will need. I think that the, the, the dollar figure is, is about $62 a cubic yard for the sand that we buy, but as it becomes available, we will have the right to buy that, and we, we will be able to buy more. The shoreline monitoring program that's there is $80,000 a year. The Natural Based Coastal Project feasibility study that's costing a million dollars. There's the OCTA plan to bring 540 cubic yards of, 40,000 cubic yards of sand to the city. And I, I mentioned this program only because there is other, there are other sources of funding, and there are other opportunities to have others contribute to this, and we, that's something I really want to work on, and I think we, as a city, will be able to do that. We had a meeting that was mentioned earlier with a, a group of, a coalition of cities and, and counties and state officials that say, we should start looking, looking for some of those opportunities, particularly in the federal area. I think, I think we will. I'm, I'm familiar with a lot of other states that get a lot more money than us and that are much smaller. Other areas in, in, in Orange County and, and in California that get a lot more money with a much lesser population, less resources, I mean, less, less beach than, than we have with fewer visitors. So that's a commitment. That's something that we will, as I'm, I'm sure my colleagues will, will, will ask us to, to continue to pursue. The good thing about a direct tax is if you don't spend the money, it doesn't get spent somewhere else. We don't say, okay, let's, let's, let's have our other pet, let's raise our, our salary to $10,000. It won't happen. It, it's, it's set aside for sand and the projects that we designate, and it's always there. It will never get abused. We have the Sandag Project, which is a significant amount, the offshore sand source investigation, which is costing 800,000. I can go through all of these, and every time you mention sand or a sand project, it's 500, it's 800,000. It's a lot of money. And these are, these are just some of the, the projects that were ongoing right now that we're spending money on, that we will continue to spend money on, but I, I think we, we, we need the resources to do that. The next slide, I just think I have something else here. Yeah. This is the, the view of our beach before we put the sand and after, and that's half the sand that we, we're purchasing. So it's, it's, if we're going to continue to be a beach community, and it's something that I want, we gotta, we're going to have to put sand there. Next slide. There's another photo from the 4th of July. Now, I, I meant, I put this photo on because I could tell you not all those are residents. A lot of them are residents. But I was at a conference last week where we talked about the, the billions of dollars that are brought into our economy, including San Clemente, by tourists, not only through, not only just TOT taxes, but hospitality, all the stores that they spend at, including grocery stores, including all the shops on Del Mar. It increases our taxes, but it also is a significant amount of increase measurable to, to our community. And without it, people come from all over California, all over the world, really, to our beaches, and I, I think that's a rather significant source of resource. I also, there was one other important contributor there at, at this conference who said, you know, and maybe people don't want to hear this, but this, I think it is important for San Clemente residents, is the value of your homes when you have a beach versus the value of your homes when you don't have a beach. And he was theorizing, he says, don't quote me, so I'm not going to quote him, but it, it's significant. It's almost a 25, I think, 30% increase in your value if you live in a city with beach access, beach views, and a beautiful beach community. You move, you move the same home to somewhere else where you're not accessible to a beach, your value of your property diminishes by 30%. So all these things are important. Without, without us being a beach community, I, I, I mean, I don't know what we are. Next slide. One of the other things people said, well, will the sand really stay? Well, I, I, I've talked to Leslie over and over about, about this, and she always refers me to Huntington Beach and Newport Beach that have been doing this for decades. With the proper amount of replenishment, with the proper ability to, to, to retain that, this is the kind of beach you, you can get. In fact, I think Huntington is even going to take a little of their sand away because they have too much. People are complaining how far they have to walk to get to the, the, the water. It's, it's something that the experts tell us, it will, it will stay. We have, we have done a couple of projects in the past that are actually not that big of a, a sand project, so they didn't stay. But the sand is out there. If you layer it and you protect it, it, it will be there, and we will have beaches just like Newport and Huntington eventually. Met last week also with Prado Dam people. They have all the sand we need, pretty much an endless amount with the dredging that they're doing. It's a little bit further away. I think they're telling us, based, you know, from Prado Dam, we could get it for about $66 a cubic yard. That's, it's expensive. It's expensive, but we're looking at, at other ways to reduce the cost. We're looking at ways of dredging at closer sites. We got a grant last week that I think we announced, I know someone said it wasn't posted, but it, we, we did a press release on it, so it was announced. We got almost $800,000, so we could look for a site that's closer to us so that we would be able to dredge that sand. We're also working with the OCTA to see if they can commit to spending some of the money that they have to spend on remediation down south. All this stuff is in the work, all this stuff we're working on. All these things will make us the beach community that we want to be. But I think in the end, I've, I've come to the, the conclusion that, you know, the way, the way to do it is through a directed tax. And let me go up a couple of more slides about some of the other issues that we have here that we have to address that are rather expensive. Let's go to the next one, the photo. Yeah. These are part of the sand projects too, the Cypress Shore Construction Project, where, you know, we had the major slide. We had also our, our next, next two slides. I'm not going to go in all the, this, these cost us $7 million. The bridge expected to cost $10 million. My point is that all this stuff is very expensive, and it's all things that people want to see done. You know, we could get federal money. We will try and pursue federal money, and if we have, we do get the federal money, then we can take that money out of our sand budget and spend it on more sand. But people want to see the trail open. It's going to take some time, but it's something we have to have the money and the resources and the commitment to resolve as, as it happens. Casa Romanica, the Mariposa, Mariposa Point Bridge, all these things, you can go on to the next couple of slides, are all very expensive projects that, truthfully, I mean, we, we were lucky to find the money, but we, we, we won't always be that lucky if you take a look at our budget. I, I will probably end there, just, my, 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 my point is that if we really want to be a beach community, and I am committed to making this be one of the best beach communities, you can't be a beach community without sand. We need it. We need to stay focused on that. We need to direct the resources. I, I'm convinced that we can get this community behind this project, and so what I'm going to do at a later point, if, if, if my colleagues allow, is sort of see if we can move to a directed tax, refine that, and, and move forward at the next city hall, the city council meeting. That's it for me. Next.
Sure. Well, when this first came up, I was, I was very selfish, because I looked at the 1% and the, and the couple of hundred bucks it was considered to cost me a, a year, and I said, you know, I, I want it all. I, I'm concerned about the public safety aspect of this in the future. I know Martin versus Boise seems like it's really going to be a big, a big boon to our, to our strategy on dealing with the homeless. I hope it is. It, I have the, the fear that it could work the opposite way for a number of different reasons. We've, we've already experienced more homeless in town recently. I don't know exactly what the dynamic is, but I, I like the idea of having the public safety component in there so we could secure the future for, for dealing with that. I, I also understand the, the part, I looked at our, our city council right here, and I go, well, we have a specific spending plan. I mean, we, we get this, you know, 13, 14 million dollars. I know this council, and you people know this council if you've been watching. We have a wide, varied political views here. We really do. But I'm confident that these five people, that we would stick to that, that spending plan, spend the money on sand, dole out a little bit to, to public safety. But I understand the trepidation, and who knows who's going to be on the city council in the future. I know that's the, the fear. There's a lot of people that don't trust government. I don't trust government. But like I say, I, I know that the people that I'm sitting with here would, would be committed to that, but, but you, you just don't know. So now I've, I've listened to the residents here, and we've had some great speakers, and I, I feel the, the, the need to also start moving towards that directed, that directed plan. I, I just think that's what the, what the residents want. I, I'd like a, a couple of, of things in there to think about if we, whatever plan we decide on, whatever plan passes, to, to remember, the sand is moving. It does. Steve Lang is 100% right. We knew when the first started putting the sand in at the pier, it was a little bit different color, and within two weeks, that sand had already moved towards Linda Lane. We could see it was moving north. So maintenance is a huge, huge part of this. We can't just go in and put up a berm once a year. No matter what sand we get, we've got to, we've got to maintain it and manage it, which means moving it all the time. If we get a lot of sand at, at Lawson, then we need to move it south, if we, if we have enough to move it south. So that's a huge component of this, and I think we'll get it paid for no matter what. Some residents have been concerned also about any tax that we put in. Right now, we don't get any money for, for cars and boats and RVs when somebody buys that in Irvine or whatever. I don't think that we need- I don't think that we need to get that either. I think there should be an exclusion for that. If you go buy a car, boat, or an RV in Irvine, we need to have some kind of exclusion or rebate to where people aren't getting penalized because they live for a large purchase. I just think that ought to be part of the, part of the plan. Also, would like to see, no matter what plan we put in, I'd like to see some kind of a citizen oversight, some kind of board committee, whatever you want to call it, to look at however we're spending the money on whatever plan we have for transparency. And they can report back to the community. It won't be a buffer between staff or us or the city manager. They can really look and see what we're spending it on, report it back to the community. I think that would be really great for transparency, which I know has been a question on the city in the past. I look at it really, really simply. It's black and white. Do we want to be a beach town? I had a resident today in North Beach come up and talk to me, and he said, stop all the rhetoric. It's really, really simple. Do we want to be a beach town? And I think there's enough residents here that have come up and expressed the thought that we should be, that we should give it to the voters. We can't pass a tax on anybody. This is up to the residents to vote. And it's gonna be, if we go to a directed task, it's gonna be a huge task to come up with 67% of voters who want that. But that will be a clear, clear message that this isn't a, I'm for taxes, I'm not for taxes. This will be ownership in the city that says, yes, we want to make that investment. So I think I'm moving towards the directed tax idea, the three-quarters percent instead of the percent, and, but, what's that?
Two-thirds.
Oh, three-quarters of a percent. Yeah, three-quarters of a percent tax instead of the 1%. But I'm warning you here, we, there might be a time in the future where we're coming back and looking for that other quarter percent for public safety. So just stand by. You never can tell. And with that, I'll...
Go ahead.
So I think everyone here is in support of sand. We all want sand. I don't think that that's the issue. What we're debating right now is how to get there. Do we, do we go with a specified vote of trying to get 67%, or do we go with that 50 plus one? If we looked at the, at the survey that was put out, to do that specified tax would take, the survey didn't show that we could get over that 67% threshold, or it was in that margin of error. It would be really, really close. And it would be on the residents here to push that over. And here's my fear, is that we are risking the future of our town with a hope that we can get over that 67% threshold. Rather than saying, if we look at the 50% threshold and 50% plus one, this thing passes, and we, that is within the margin of error according to the statistical survey, and we have guaranteed sand plus security. So, I mean, this is my, my big dilemma here, is that we're risking the future of our town. We're risking the future of placing sand on our beaches, and risking the future of generations to come on a hope that maybe we can get above 67% of that threshold in a town that historically does not vote for any sort of tax increase. I mean, I am, I, I'm really worried. I'm really worried. Because if this doesn't pass, we don't have a beach town. And yet, even if a majority of the people in this town say they want the beach town, it still wouldn't pass because we need the supermajority of 67%. For me, it would be worth it to, to swallow my hope of a specified tax. I want the specified tax. I think it'd be great, but I don't, I can't say for certain that it'll pass in this town. So I'd much, much rather see a, something that we can almost guarantee will pass for the sake of the future of this city. Like, what are we willing to risk that it, that it doesn't pass? I'm really, really concerned. So I hear what the council's saying, but man, this is a, we're facing an existential threat here. An existential threat to our community, our way of life. And we're willing to put that on a 50-50 chance instead of a guaranteed pass. I shouldn't say guaranteed, but a much higher, higher, higher probability of passing for the future of our town.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Duncan? Councilmember Duncan?
All right. Thank you, Steve. I'll let you finish up. Well, yeah, this is, this is an existential issue, no doubt about it. And Andy, thank, thank you to you and the staff for putting that presentation together. Thank you, Lesleya, for working miracles for us over the last year and saving our project, you know, that we had for the pier. I think there's no doubt, obviously, that we need sand, and there's many benefits of it, including economic for our economy, actually for the whole state economy, as well as for protecting our homes, right, that are right there along the coastline and the rail line. I think I'd like to make a point, and actually Victor sort of alluded to it, though. I think it's important to remember this. We already paid the taxes for this. I hope everybody understands that. We have the highest sales tax in the country. Our sales tax is sitting in Sacramento, allocated for coastal protection, and it doesn't come here. We already paid the money. I understand the concern and the desperation, actually, because I share it as an avid beachgoer with kids, right, that are always at the beach. But we've been let down by the folks in Sacramento, by our representatives. Forget the feds, Mike Levin gave us $10 million. We got that money. We didn't get a dime from the state. All of our tax money, we're a donor city and a donor county. That money's going to other communities. The hundreds of millions of dollars that's up there is going to other communities, whose representatives fought and got that money, which we already paid, to go to San Francisco, other areas in San Diego, and not here. Right? Remember that when we review this issue. It's important, you know, I can understand the concern. Heck, I am more than willing to pay my fair share. But I have a responsibility to the city to be fiscally responsible, to be fiscally conservative, which is the attrition of San Clemente. I don't think we should let our state officials off the hook for failing us, leaving us dangerously unprotected by digging further into our diminished wallets and pocketbooks in this very tough economic time. All right? I know some of this you don't want to hear, but this is important to think about. And I think about as well the folks who aren't here, people with multiple jobs, our military veterans, our active-duty Marines on a limited budget, our working families working multiple jobs, our seniors on a fixed income, who will all be affected by a potential tax. Right? Let's not, let's not leave those people out. And I am concerned about them in these very, very tough economic times with high inflation. So, look, Tim gave a great comment about political courage and the moment, and I agree. This, I think, is, is the hardest vote probably I've, I've probably had to look at because of these competing tensions. My love for this town, my acknowledgement that it's existential, at the same time, my realistic concern about the fiscal situation of our residents, who would be on the hook for paying for this when they've already paid, paying double for this. Because, mind you, this is a great benefit for San Clemente. This is a benefit for the state. This benefits the rail line. How come they're not kicking in the money? Why does San Clemente residents have to pay for the rail line? Okay? The state owns that water line down. The state should be paying. That's our money. We already paid. Hundreds of millions of dollars up there for coastal protection. Do we realize that? How come we haven't talked about that? How come we're letting those folks off the hook? So, look, let me close out with a practical point, and Mark alluded to it a little bit. The feel-good discussion about the specific tax, I can see that sounds alluring. Let's be realistic here. That's, that's gonna be a really tough sell in this town. We voted twice down a TOT increase in this town, a tax on other people, not even our residents, right? Tax on people from out of town who use our city and don't pay for it, right? Raising their taxes to help subsidize the damage they do to our city and the extra costs they bring to our city for public safety and otherwise. We voted that down. So I think this is a, this is a precarious situation here, especially with this specific tax. I would seriously advocate that we table this item until a point that we can get to a different situation. This is a highly-charged time. This is a time of great economic distress. I don't know that this is the time we want to be rallying folks to pay double, to let people off the hook, to let our money just go away that we've already paid, even if it's important as this. So that's what I think we should consider, and I know, heck, I'm disappointing, heck, a lot of my own supporters, right? But I'm trying to be realistic, I'm trying to be practical, and bring a comprehensive approach to this. It's hard to say these words, but I want to make sure that we take all of this into account, and we don't get sort of carried away in the moment, do something that we might regret. So with that, I'll yield, and I'll pass it to Steve.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I think there's no question that we are a beach town. The beach is the reason we live here, the reason why we love it so much, and it's crucially important to all of us. There's absolutely no question about that. And we need to do what we can to get sand on our beach as quick as possible, as affordable as possible. Four years ago, I recommended, because when we talked about the dismal state of our beach, I suggested that we immediately hire a sand czar, and that we immediately file a request for the Coastal Commission, the state, and the federal agencies to take the sand, which is sitting hundreds of yards off of our beach, and blow it back up onto the beach. The City Council, including at least one member who's here, decided that was, at the time, not a good idea, that we should, in fact, hire another consultant in Washington, DC, to knock on the door of the Army Corps of Engineers when we need, when we needed more sand. Several years later, with the continued dismal state of our beaches, the council decided, maybe this is a time to hire a sand czar. But they didn't go ahead with a request to take the sand, which is currently on our beach, and blow it back up on our beach, which is quick, easy, simple, and less, less, less expensive. You know, this, the discussion we've had this evening is focused on, on the money, the mode of, it's analysis about the, the mode of delivery of the sand. And the mode of delivery that we're currently looking at, and what everyone else is looking at, is the Army Corps of Engineers Manson-type project, which is incredibly, incredibly expensive, when you have the federal government do a job versus private enterprise. For example, in the space situation, SpaceX sends up a rocket for $60 million. NASA sends up the same rocket for $2 billion. Now, if NASA's not that much different than the United States Navy or the Army Corps of Engineers, when you're talking about the federal bureaucracy, who for the next 50 years will be budgeting every clerk, every, every analysis, every analyst, and the electric bills from their offices, and wrapping all that money into a bill that we ultimately have to pay. We can deliver sand, and we can deliver it much, much cheaper. You know, we talk about Mr. Lang, he's been mentioned before from the podium, he did a great presentation tonight. He mentioned that 80% of our sand is, over the last 15 years, has been lost. It has, and it's been moving offshore. It's sitting beyond what's called the, the depth-of-closure field, which is the point at which sand doesn't come back up on the beach when it migrates north and south. It's in about 30 feet of water, and it's sitting there. Can I, can you bring up Mayor Cabral's first slide, if you would? That depth of closure is located there. The sand is sitting there, has been for eons, and will continue to be there for eons, while we import sand from Encinitas and Seal Beach through this massive, the equivalent of the Sixth Fleet staging the platform to bring the sand. Take a look at the sand. Look at that beach carefully. Do you see that green water? You know why it's green? That's sand. And it's sitting there, and there's, there's, you know, we talk about the unlimited sand at Prado Dam that we can bring in for $66 a yard on freight cars, which is a great solution if we don't have any other solutions. But this sand is sitting there. You could have a low cost, a relatively small floating platform with a 500-horsepower engine and about 1,000 feet of eight- or 10-inch plastic pipes, like I recommended four years ago, and blow that sand in no time at all back up on the beach. Now, everyone's concern is, oh my God, the Coastal Commission, the environmentalists will go nuts. We can never do that. Nonsense. We've never asked. And when I've talked to City Council members from Seal Beach to Encinitas, and I mentioned this concept, their eyes get big, they get excited, and they say, how can we get involved in that? Whatever you're doing, we want to be in. We want part of that. If we had a mechanism like that, we could do it for a flipping fraction of the cost, and we'd have every city in Orange County, and most of them in San Diego and Los Angeles, saying, send that dredger our way. We want to hire that guy. And you say, well, people have said, well, no one does that right now. Believe me, if we, if we had an RFP for someone to do a sanding operation, we'd have guys a mile long in line saying, I want that contract. It's a generational wealth contract for somebody who will do it. So I think our focus needs to be not on the money to finance the Sixth Fleet off of our shores, but rather, we need to look at how we get the sand here. And I think we need to pursue, and we are pursuing it with the offshore, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we are looking at that. I think we need to continue to look at it, and I think we need to apply, and let those agencies that have concerns about marine life or so forth, we'll address those issues when we come, and we'll analyze where that sand is. But I think that's the direction we need to be moving in. And when we do, the Orange County Transit Authority is gonna be on board with that effort, as will Sandag and others. Regarding the, you know, the current situation in Sacramento, you know, the supermajority of Democrats that run Sacramento have held our money, have squandered it, so now they're in debt. And I don't think that's gonna change anytime soon unless we get more conservative-minded people in Sacramento and Washington, quite frankly. So, Mr. City Manager, I appreciate the analysis you've done. It was, it was excellent. I think this is a logical step if we only view the Army Corps of Engineers and the Manson Project. But I think if we look at, if we pursue, not just talk about, but pursue other issues, I think, I think we can make progress in this area. We all want sand. We all love sand. We must have sand. And I'm committed to that, as are my colleagues. So that's mainly comments on this evening's agenda item.
Thank you. We did lose one member, so let's take a three-minute break. Three-minute break. Yeah. I know there was a statement that was made that the state doesn't contribute to our, hello, let's call the meeting back to order. Who's back there? The meeting's back in session. If you could take your seats.
All the public safety professionals.
So I just wanted to comment, there was a comment that was made by one of my colleagues, the state doesn't contribute. They in fact do contribute, contributed about $3.5 million to the project. The federal government contributed $10 million, but the state did in fact contribute a significant amount.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, well, let me finish. And actually, when you compare what the state's contribution is with the smaller budget that they have compared to the trillions of dollars that the federal government have, it's a rather significant amount of money.
But go ahead. Okay. Well, I think that's not fairly characterized. Look, California's a coastal state, and it's a very wealthy state. So you can't really compare the federal government budget, which is all 50 states and all kinds of different priorities, to coastal issues in California. That should be the top priority for California, is protecting the coastline, protecting our local businesses, right? So let's not get carried away with apples and oranges here. Secondly, we didn't get an appropriation from the state like we did from the feds. We got from the feds a direct appropriation. Congressman Mike Levin went out and he got us $10 million so we could get the project done. Our state representatives got us $0 million. We had to compete for grants with other cities and other entities. That's not the same thing. I'm talking about a direct appropriation of our tax dollars back to our community. That's what's missing, and I think if we had that, we wouldn't need to bear the brunt of this tax on our poorest residents. So I just want to make sure everybody keeps that in mind.
We'll just agree to disagree. I don't think you fairly characterize it either, but we'll just disagree on that point. I think, and I thank both of them, our Assemblywoman and our Congressman, I've thanked them both publicly many times for what they do. I mean, any help that they can give, any elected official, doesn't matter what party they are, I always thank them publicly. So let's move on. I don't know if there's someone--
Can I make just a quick comment? Also, everything that Chris said is going back to the responsibility of the state, I think 100% true. I wish the state would step up, and I wish we'd get more money. The issue I have with tabling it is I just don't expect the state to step up anytime soon, and I think this is more of an emergency situation. So I agree with what you're saying, I'm just not sure that putting this off is going to be beneficial. And to Steve's point about there are different methods of getting sand on the beach, no matter what we do, if we put something on the ballot and it happens to pass, we can definitely use different strategies also. We're not locked up into SCOOP or anything else. So if there's a better strategy, we can use it. It's all about getting the funding for that. That's--
All right. So is there any further discussion or just--
Yeah, I just want to reemphasize one more time. My main concern, on the survey that was done, again, survey is a point in time, that when it was a targeted tax, that population said about, there was a 64% approval rating for that targeted tax. That is within the margin of error, but we're playing Russian roulette with it. And the future of our town is going to be based on that 3% margin of error. That, I don't like those odds. As opposed to going with the general tax, where we saw about 58% approval rating, 59% approval rating, and within about a 4% to 5% margin of error, I like those odds a lot more. And if it weren't for the future of our town, I would say, yes, let's go with the targeted tax. But for this, let's have the people out there decide, and a majority of the people out there decide what they want. Not us up here saying, oh, we need a supermajority, but out there, have a regular majority to say what they want for the future of this town.
I appreciate that, yeah. I mean, we may disagree. I am confident that we can get this supermajority. I think it's the right approach. I will do whatever I can to convince people and to sell the supermajority of residents that putting sand on our beaches, restoring our trails, doing whatever we can to make this the most vibrant beach city in Southern California, if not all of California, is the way and the direction that we have to go. I think people, you know, with all of your support, will go online. I do understand your point, though. You make a legitimate point. And the issue I have with that is that it's, the way this is drafted right now, it is, it's essentially maybe a little bit disingenuous, the way it's been written up, to say it's a little bit of money for everything, when it's real, when we know it's not, I mean, we would be telling people, hey, it's for A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, and we know that we're going to spend it all on sand. And I just don't feel comfortable, you know, trying to sell the community on an idea that we're going to put a little bit for fire, a little bit for all these different projects, when that's not our intention. And I mean, maybe if we rewrote it, I could do that, but I just don't think we're being completely, I don't feel completely 100% honest with the public, and I don't want to violate their trust. Absolutely, yeah.
I don't know, I feel like that's a little disingenuous as well, because on that general tax, bring roughly $13 million in, and it was already specified, that $10 million would be going for, and again, these are approximations, about $10 million going to sand, and then the other $3 million going to those other various projects that were listed, and that we would have oversight over this. So my, I don't think it's disingenuous with how we're presenting it. I think the numbers are all there, we have the oversight there. I think this can get passed the way it is.
Yeah. No, and again, I don't disagree with anything you're saying. I think you make a legitimate point. The other issue I mean I have with it is that, I mean, maybe all of us here today would agree that we're going to spend it all on sand, but you know, maybe after the next election, we have a whole new city council, and we're all gone in two or four years, and they say, no, we'd like to spend it on the brand-new pickleball court, and there's nothing the city could do about it. You know, we want to build a brand-new complex, maybe the former mayor convinces them that we need this complex, or a new soccer field, or a new, whatever. And they have that money to do that. And they could say, well, I'm not tied to what, you know, was passed by me and you and others, and it is concerning to me. And so that's just how I think about it, and I appreciate your comments, though, and I think you have raised legitimate points. So is there a motion, though, that some, yes?
So you got me thinking. I mean, look, I want to be clear. I'm not for taxing San Clemente residents to fulfill a regional, to address a regional issue, that's a state responsibility, okay? Sorry. I do want to add a word of caution, though, for folks thinking, and this goes to Mark's point. If you put a tax on and it fails, that's kind of it, right? You kind of get one shot at this thing, you don't bring it back the next election. So if you're going to do it, I would make sure that the timing is right and everything's lined up. Just a word of caution there, right? You want to, you want to make sure this thing passes, you don't want to fail, because then you're looking at years and years probably before you'd be able to kind of reset. So if there's some tension there, you might want to look at taking a pause and finding the best possible opportunity to do it. Thank you.
No, I agree with you. I think it's got to be the best that we can come up with, and something we think the city will support. And the flip side of that is if the residents don't believe it, then we shouldn't tax it. I mean, if the residents in this city say, no, we don't want a beach community, we want, and we don't want more people coming into our town, and we don't want more sand on our beaches, we're happy the way we are, you know, that's fine. I perfectly accept that. But I was elected, and I'm going to do what I think is best, and so that's the direction I'm going to go. So is there a motion?
One more thing. Again, here's my concern, is that we have, let's say we get a 66% approval on this. That's still a majority of the people that want this to happen, that want sand on the beach. And if we don't get that 67%, you're still not listening to a majority of the people of how to save our beach and the future of our town. So I mean, I think we're going in circles here, but yeah--
No, no, I do understand. I mean, again, I'll just respond to that. The problem is if you have, if you have on the ballot, there are 10 different things that this money for, people could vote for any one of those 10 items, and you'd never know why they voted. Maybe they all voted because they want more security, or a bigger police department, a bigger fire department, or more faster 911 service. You don't really know. And I would say to you, Mark, is if we get 66% on this, and we understand that people want the beach, I would be inclined to, you know, to try again with the general one. We know we can get 66%, and nothing would stop us from coming back and say, okay, we'll recraft this the way it is right now. And we know 60, we got 66% vote last time, we'll probably get more than 50 next time. So--
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I mean, the comments you made about the ambiguity are valid. Is there any way to craft this resolution differently to where it could be less ambiguous, more specific? I'm mainly talking about the 911 thing and the access and all that. Is there any way to craft it to specific sand retention management and public safety specifically, whether it be funding deputies, OCFA, and park rangers specifically, and still have it qualify for a general tax?
So the way the statute reads is that if you earmark the money for specific purposes, no matter how many those are, there can be 20 of them, then it is a special purpose tax. If it's clear that they can only be used for that, those purposes, then it's a special purpose tax. A general tax, there has, a general tax, and that's why it's easier and harder to pass, it's a lower threshold, but harder to pass, it goes into the general fund, and it can be used for--
Anything.
So the answer is, the residents would either have to trust the current elected officials and elect good ones in the future, or there's a chance that the money may not be spent the way it's--
Yeah, I like your concept. I keep trying to narrow that down, but--
I'd like to sugarcoat that, I can't.
--the state statute gives us that ability.
Can I ask a question? Maybe you know the history of it, or maybe you don't, I'm not sure. But we passed a tax, what, 15, 16 years ago, for water treatment, water reclamation, what I'm--
Ocean protection.
The ocean protection, clean water. Was that a, passed as a general tax or a specific?
That was a fee. So it was passed with a written ballot. It was, they sent it to your house, and you mailed back in whether or not you were, it was a mail-in ballot. So it was different than a referendum.
Do you know what the threshold was for that?
50 plus one.
And the cities, and the citizens of this town voted to enact that with the 50 plus one?
I think three, Dave's here, I think they passed it three times. He has a better history of that than I do. I think, it was passed more than once, I don't know, I don't know the--
Which fee was that, though?
Clean Ocean-- Clean Ocean Fund.
And in that, because it was a fee, it had to be used for that? Only for that?
It could only, sorry, it can only be used for, to, for cost recovery. It can only be used for costs that were actually incurred by the city.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dave Revesdorf, Public Works Director. Yes, the fee was passed three different times. I think the first time was right around 2002, 2003, and it was for seven years. And it, I think it was close to 60%. It passed fairly handily. The second, third time, we saw the number of votes decline, and the last time it barely passed. And the last one was for a five-year period, so. And it was a 50-plus-one. It was specifically used for clean ocean activities.
And how much was that tax per resident?
It was right around $4, $4 to $5 per month--
I thought--
--per household.
$5 a month?
About $5 a month per household.
So $60 a year?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Does someone want to make a motion? I'll make one, then. I think this issue needs just a little bit more time to resolve, to give the residents an opportunity. I know I've heard from many people that said we didn't give them enough time to digest this. And what I would propose, that we bring this up on our August meeting that we postponed earlier. I don't know if that's a good... Have a special meeting to consider a directed tax at a lower percentage that would address the focus, beach, beach trail, other issues that have been discussed.
I don't think it can be a special meeting, though. I think it has to be a regular meeting that was scheduled.
It would be a regular scheduled meeting that we...
Previously canceled.
Previously canceled.
We could reinstate the August 6 regular meeting that was previously canceled.
So...
Is that your motion, that we continue this to August 6?
I don't know if we have to continue, or we...
Continue the item, I mean, to August 6?
Is that the appropriate way to...
Continue the item to... Yeah, not the meeting, but continue the item to August 6.
Well, it's... We're not really continuing this item.
You're not really continuing... Well, that depends. That's a great point. It depends on the direction we get from the council.
Well, the direction would...
If you're inclined to take action on what was presented to you tonight on a general tax, you'd probably continue the item. But I'm hearing that we may get some different directions, so it may be just a completely separate new item, if we get different directions.
I'm proposing a directed tax at a lower threshold that includes... That would be a new item, and we'd have to set a new date for that.
If the direction is for staff to bring back a special tax...
Yes.
You would want to give that direction and reinstate your regular meeting, and it would not be a continuation of this item, because this item is for a general tax.
That's correct. That's... I think that's how I stated it. Will you need any further direction beyond the discussion today?
Only that there was some talk that if it was a direct tax, that you would be looking at about $10 million a year, so you would be maybe looking to lower it from 1 cent to 3/4 of a cent.
I think that was...
Some direction along those lines, so we bring back enough information so that you guys can take action on it. We want to... I think we can... I think we can be... I think we can provide you with a more effective staff report that will allow you to move forward after the discussion tonight, after the input we've received, with a little bit more direction. I think we can come with a more refined resolution and staff report, so that you guys can take action.
Even including the direction we've given you publicly, at least, at several of the meetings. So that would be my motion. And do I have a...
I'll second that.
Can you repeat the motion? I'm a little confused now.
All right. We would have... We would reinstate our meeting of August 2.
August 6.
6, okay. We would come up with a proposal for a directed tax with a new resolution, a new findings, a new report, a new ordinance, a lowered threshold for the percentage of tax, and a more robust discussion about what the kinds of sand projects, the beach trail, other related activities we're talking about, including those that have been discussed in the presentations that we've all made. Is that...
Are you okay with that? Not so much? What would you want to add to it?
No, I'm fine. I understand now.
Okay. All right.
I'll second that again. Real tough discussion, though. What do we do with this item that's on the agenda now?
That would be the action. Your action, the motion, is to give direction to staff to come back with something different.
Okay.
And what is different is just reducing the 1 cent to 3/4.
And a directed.
And making it a direct.
A directed tax of a general.
Right. With additional sand-related, mariposa bridge, etc.
Yes.
Beach-related.
So discussion on that? Anybody?
My only discussion is, you know, I like the focus on the sand. I think that needs to be all of our priority. I can't support a tax increase, so I'll be voting no, but I appreciate the direction that you're... The focus that you're aiming at.
Good. Could I add on to that? That when we come back at... On August 6, that we have both propositions in front of us? That we can have the discussion and say, either option is there?
I think you can.
You can't, but this is sort of...
If there's other people out there that are for this one, they would have an opportunity to speak. And if they don't want it, then so be it.
Well, yeah. Let me move back. I'm going to move to another issue quite... Quite quick, briefly, related to this. I have a question for Steve, because hearing your comments, the no on the tax increases, which, you know, if it's a no, you know, and we have two no's, and, you know, maybe all this is futile. And, you know, there's no need to move this on. And I guess I'd like to just...
For clarification for the audience, this is a vote that takes four yeses, no matter what we do.
Not exactly, Councilmember Loeffler. So if the vote is to place the measure that's before you on the ballot, that would require four votes. But if the motion that's on the table...
Doesn't take four votes.
Is to bring something back.
Oh, no, I was talking about... I was talking about to put something on the ballot's going to take four votes.
Okay, yes, that's true.
And I think that's what the mayor was reflecting, is that maybe there's no chance of getting four votes.
Yeah, no, if we... I mean, I'm reading the room right now. If we have two no votes against any tax increase, then it's futile to bring anything back. And so, you know, that's what I'm trying to better understand, where my colleagues are on this.
I think we have a first and a second on that motion, right? Right now? Okay, then I will... I'll move that we table the issue.
Until August 6, or that we table?
No, to table it indefinitely, that option. All right.
I'll second the motion.
All right. So you're... To table the motion that I made, is it?
Table the agenda item.
To table the agenda item indefinitely and bring it back. But if you're going to bring it back, bring it back when it's got a chance to pass.
Essentially, because we're not going to get four votes.
Yeah. All right, well, okay, there's a motion to table the item. And the item that you're tabling is this under... Let me figure out if we can do that, because we already have a motion on the table.
That would be the subsequent.
There's a substitute motion. It's a competing motion, so we vote on it first.
All right. Well, let's take a vote on that, then.
Okay, so that was a motion by Councilmember...
To table.
To table, right. Motion to table this item. That's the substitute motion on the table. That was by Councilmember Duncan, with a second by Councilmember Knoblock. Councilmember Loeffler.
No.
Council... Mayor Protim Inmeyer.
No.
No. Mayor Cabral.
No.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
And Councilmember...
Aye.
That carries 2-3, and we can vote on the original motion on the table.
Okay.
Which is a consideration of a directed tax with a lower threshold for 3/4 cent. That was a motion by Mayor Cabral, seconded by Councilmember Loeffler.
Madam Clerk, is our voting machine not working?
No one had made the motion electronically. I can go in and add it for you, if you'd like.
I just...
It is working.
It is working? I don't see anything wrong.
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't make a motion and seconded on the iPad.
Right.
So I'll go ahead and second that.
So, okay, so I'll add in Councilmember... Or I'll add in Mayor Cabral's original motion, and that was a second by Councilmember Loeffler. So we will start the voting.
This is on the original motion?
Correct.
Yeah.
Wait, wait a second. This is on my mo...
This is on your motion.
Yes.
This is on the original motion, correct. Mayor Protim... So the original motion carries 3-2.
Okay. All right. I guess we can get into discussion about the same issue, is something that Rick mentioned, that if we're going to pass a tax measure, it's going to take four votes. And we have two people that are, as I read it, are against it. And so I would say that, you know, in some sense, it's almost futile to move this to it.
Well, you know what? Between now and August 6, if there's really a lot of people that are really interested in getting a sand measure on, maybe they can communicate with council members, and you never can tell. Maybe somebody will change their mind. I just hate to kill it now.
Well, we won't kill it now. It's already... We've already voted for it. So it's on the agenda. So what's the next agenda item?
Okay, and can I just make one clarification? Mayor, did your original motion include Mayor Protim Inmeyer's friendly amendment to bring back this agenda item at that same time?
It did not.
No. No. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the calling of the general municipal election of November 5, 2024. And mayor and council, before you tonight, are three resolutions. One is calling for the election to be held on November 5, 2024. We have two city council seats open, one in District 3 and one in District 4. That's your first resolution. Second resolution is a request to consolidate our election with the Orange County Registrar Voters. And the third resolution for your consideration is to determine if there is a tie vote, would you like a special election to... For a runoff?
Is there any public comment?
No public comments.
All right, then, is there any discussion?
I'm in favor of Resolutions 1 and 2, and for the third resolution, I would just say of the state standard of drawing, or flip of the coin or draw, as opposed to another election, if it's a tie.
Okay.
I'll make that motion if there's no other discussion.
I think it's appropriate. Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comments on the...
No, no public comments.
No public comments.
I'll just do a substitute motion, accept Resolution 1, Resolution, or Number 1 and Number 2 under 10B. And then for Number 3, having it go back to a municipal election as an alternative.
Okay. I'll second your motion.
Okay.
There's two competing motions. One is...
Two alternatives that we have.
Draw, straw, is another one. You have a runoff. Okay. So we'll vote on the substitute first. Are we going to have...
I've entered in the motion, so you can go ahead and vote, and that substitute motion includes the special election.
Okay.
That fails.
All right, so we'll vote on the motion, then.
And the original motion on the table was to just adopt Resolutions 1 and 2, calling the election and calling to consolidate the election. That was a motion by Councilmember Knoblock, with a second by Councilmember Loeffler, and you can go ahead and start your voting. And that carries 5-0.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. I have no public comments.
All right, public comments?
Any items?
No pub...
No public comments, I'm sorry.
All right. Then let's...
I'll make a motion to move the balance.
The consent calendar?
Yes. The consent calendar. All right, I'll...
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Loeffler seconded. You can go ahead and start your voting. Carries 5-0. Next item on the agenda is... This is consideration of how to handle the recent resignation of a Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Commissioner that was just appointed. Richard Kay was appointed to the Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Commission... Oh, I'm sorry, Oral Communications Part 2, I skipped. Thank you, Megan. But we don't have any speakers. So next item is the resignation of Richard Kay from Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Commission. Couple of options for how you would like to handle this. You could vote on one of the individuals that you interviewed at your last meeting that was not appointed. There were five applicants that were not appointed. Linda Williams subsequently rescinded her application, so there are four applicants that you could consider: Jennifer Elliott, Douglas Juvenal, Teddy Khan, or Terry Rosau. Or you could direct staff to re-advertise the position, accept applications again, and do another round of interviews.
I think we had some great candidates and great applications. I think we ought to select one of the four, is my personal opinion.
I agree with that. That's my view.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Teddy Khan. He was a lot of energy, a lot of excitement about the commission, and I just think he'd make a very energetic candidate, so I make that motion.
I'll make a... Or, sorry, he needs to be seconded.
Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
I'll make a substitute motion for Douglas Juvenal, that he be considered.
I'll second that. All right. So any discussion on either of these candidates? We did interview him, we did talk about...
They'd both be great.
They would be. All right. So we'll just call the question on Douglas, then, I guess.
Okay.
I'll pull up your votes here. You can... Okay, you can go ahead and start your voting. That fails 2 to 3 with Councilmember Knoblock, Councilmember Loeffler, and Mayor Cabral voting no.
All right, let's move on to Teddy.
I'll enter in your motions. You can go ahead and start voting. And that carries 4-1 with Councilmember Inmeyer, or Mayor Protim Inmeyer, voting no.
All right.
Okay. Going back to, we have future agenda items to discuss?
Yes, we have a couple of them. I know Mark had one.
Well, yeah, and it actually makes sense now, because we'll have the August 6 meeting, so we can discuss this August 6. Yes, there... Let me get my notes here. Marblehead Elementary is looking at doing some fingerprinting for volunteers. It's a Title I school, but they're looking to get some funding to help with some of our lower-income residents with that fingerprinting process. It costs about $48 per fingerprinting. So I'm just looking for a second if the council would consider putting in about $1,000 toward Just looking for a second to discuss it at the next meeting.
All right, for discussion, yep.
Sure, I'll give it a third.
Okay, so we'll get a report on why and how, and the need, and funding another federal or another public agency.
This is a vote to discuss it. This is a vote to fund it.
This is for staff report.
Yes, yes. I understand that.
I, I just hope the staff report includes analysis of why the largest school district in the county needs $1,000 to conduct its own business, so.
All right.
Discuss it.
We'll, we'll discuss it, yeah. All right, seeing no further discussion, let's.
We don't need a vote, it just automatically comes back.
Oh, it's, it's, yeah, a report that we're gonna get, all right.
The second item, if, if I could, Mr. Mayor. The, the cart issue, the taco cart that's been springing up in, in the north part and the south part of town. My concern there is, we have, we have an ordinance that says that you can't do this, it's, you're not licensed, the health department has standards. The health department hasn't been enforcing this, and I guess my concern is when our, when our staff, our code enforcement people confront the, the people, they, they come, you know, they, they shine their nose, there's nothing you can do. They have no, they have no ID, so there's no, you can't cite them, they, you don't know who you're citing. And I guess, I guess what I want to do, if it's possible, is put some teeth into it, so that if our code enforcement people go out there, they don't, they don't leave, we gotta be able to confiscate that cart, do something so that the activity ceases. And right now, it's a hit and miss, and they come back, and it's just a little problematic. So I, my thing, and I, I don't know what we should do, but my thinking is perhaps we do a confiscation, impose a fine, and then a fee to get their cart back. And, and if they do it a second time, the cart never gets returned, or something.
I might, I might suggest that we just look at what other cities that have, have similar regulations, how they model.
Okay, then let's.
We, we can't have, we can't have discussion from, from the public.
Then I would, I would, then, and when we agendize that, I'd just ask the staff to do a, a report, to see what other cities are doing, what our options are. I, I don't have a specific recommendation, I just think we need to consider something.
There may be something better.
Yeah, exactly.
If you don't know, okay.
So that's my, my request.
I'll second that.
Do you need a third for a staff report?
Is there one?
I'll give you a third.
Okay. All right.
Just for clarification, that might be the second meeting in August. Just to give us enough time, just to make sure we do some research on that.
That's fine.
That's okay, okay.
Well, I mean, it's.
Soon, as soon as you can, but if you can't, do it then by that time. Would it, I know you're, you've got a lot on your agenda.
Anything else that people want to raise here? Other future agenda items? All right.
Council Subcommittee Updates.
Yeah. We have, I'll, I'll start on the Songs Subcommittee. We have a, another shake test, I think it's tomorrow morning, 8:00 in San Diego, where we're going to Senator Levin, myself, the, the Songs Consumer Election, Consumer Advisory Panel will be doing another demonstration of, of the, the shake test, where we put the stored nuclear fuel containers on a, on a site where we replicate a, an earthquake and see that they withstand, don't tip over, are, are protected, and that will be taking place tomorrow. And that's the, that's the report. Any other reports?
And those containers are not, are not filled with nuclear fuel.
No, no, they are not. They are not. No, they're, they're a used container, so. Any other reports? All right, City Attorney?
I have nothing to report, except it's a pleasure to serve the City of San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you. Real pleasure. City Manager?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, just so, and I will double-check and confirm this, but the, our consultant was watching the meeting, of course, and has indicated that if you go for a special tax, a special tax requires a three-fifths vote, so you, three council members can pass a special tax. A general tax requires four, to, requires the four out of five. But we will confirm that, so just wanted, I just wanted to make that clear, because I don't want anybody to come to the next meeting, whoa, you should have told us that, you know. I just, I just want to make sure, as I understand it, tonight, at this moment, three people can pass a special tax.
Okay, all right.
Four to pass a general tax. In every way possible, a general tax is more difficult to pass.
When you say three, you mean three to put it on the ballot?
Correct, I'm sorry, yes, I'm, I'm very sorry about that. It takes many tens of thousands of votes for it to pass, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for that small technical correction.
All right.
Just kidding, big technical correction.
Thank you.
We have.
Minor thing.
Oh, yeah.
As you guys gather up, as you guys gather up your stuff to get ready to go, I have 10 contracts to go through, so.
All right.
Give me just a minute here. Ultra Systems Environmental, professional environmental consulting services in the amount of $19,680. ASSI Security, Orange County Sheriff's Department Secure Parking at City Hall, that's part of that fencing project, $23,423. SandCon Technologies Incorporated Sewer Line Rehabilitation, $41,874. Powerhouse Combustion and Medical Corporation, which is for boiler and sledge heater, $13,996. Wildan Engineering for Commercial Stormwater Compliance Inspection, $19,000. Duncan Engineering for the Marine Pier Structural Assessment, $32,353. Teresa Dobbs, the First Amendment to the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Contract, $25,000. LSA Associates, Montalvo Canyon Outlet Improvements, $9,00920. Royal Access, Orange County Sheriff's Department Secure Parking at City Hall, $47,245. And finally, Solus Lighting and Electrical Services, Orange County Sheriff's Department Secure Parking at City Hall, $32,195.
All right, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, that second report was for an, an environmental or engineering report, the second one you mentioned?
The first one, Ultra Systems Environmental, professional environmental consulting services.
And what, what were they consulting on? I'm just curious.
You gotta sprint, right?
How much is Jay costing us again?
Getting a workout in here.
Yeah.
I guess you sit in the front row. Ultra Systems Environmental, that is for SECA study for the golf course netting. So that's to ensure we go through the full process, because we want to raise the netting, and it has some potential view impacts, so we want to make sure we go through the proper SECA process before we build anything out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're done. All right, someone want to move to adjourn?
I'll move, we adjourn to the next meeting, regularly scheduled meeting on August 20, 20.
No, no.
I'll, I'll read the.
Someone else do it, I got a whole sheet.
We have a motion by Councilmember No Block. If we have a second, I'll, I'll, I'll read the adjournment.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember No Block, seconded by Councilmember Loeffler, to adjourn to an, to a regular meeting scheduled for August 6, 2024. The closed session will begin at 5:00. The regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. The, the meeting will take place in the council chambers located at 910 Cali Negotio, second floor, San Clemente. So our next meeting is August 6th. We will see you then.
See you then, thank you.
And was that a 5-0 vote to, to adjourn at 9:13 PM?
All in favor, aye, it's unanimous, yeah. You know, it's, it's interesting, that, that never came off.
It's twice this year I've had.
It's on your calendar, too.